I'd like to call this, uh, meeting of August fifth, uh, to order. Uh, Ms. Bowers, would you please, uh, call the roll?
Ms. Safanja?
Here.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here. Let the record show that all board members are present. Um, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Cherry. And a second from Dr. Woodhouse. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Bowers, will you call the roll?
Ms. Safanja?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye. Motion carries. Our next, our first, our next item on the agenda is, uh, the consent agenda, which consists of personnel report. Twenty dash ten. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Samuels and I believe a second from Ms. Banks Gray. All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Bowers, please follow the roll.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Safanja?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye. Motion carries. I will point out that the consent agenda also included the minutes of our school board meeting from July eighth as well. And now, we're on to the good stuff. Um, we come to the section of our meeting where we hear, uh, the superintendent and staff reports, so I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Smith.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman and, uh, members of the school board, uh, good evening. I think the first, uh, presentation that we have, and that is our return to school, uh, recommendation. Let me begin by saying thank you for the opportunity to present my recommendation regarding the fall, uh, return to school for Hampton, uh, city schools. As you're aware, I am recommending that, uh, our return to school this fall would be, uh, one hundred percent virtual for all students for at least the first nine weeks unless, uh, health conditions improve. And certainly the basis for my recommendation is complex and yet very straightforward, uh, in its rationale. Uh, while we have put a lot of work into opening a modified in-person model, we firmly believe, uh, an all-virtual opening is the safest option at this time, uh, for our students and staff. Clearly, uh, the local data, uh, for our region points us in this direction specifically as it relates to, uh, younger people who make up the majority of new COVID nineteen cases in Hampton Roads and the concern that exists among public health officials if this trend continues. Secondly, uh, this recommendation is also reinforced by the unfortunate reality, uh, that as of Monday, July the twenty seventh, the Virginia Department of Health reported a little over fifteen hundred new coronavirus cases. The largest single-day increase since the end of May and that of all the new cases in Virginia, thirty-three percent were in the Hampton Roads region. The map that you have in front of you, this map clearly depicts that our region, the Hampton Roads region is a COVID nineteen high transmission area. So then, uh, this recommendation is based on the current increases in COVID nineteen cases in the Hampton Roads area, increases this in cases among young people and the reality that young people are carrying and transmitting the virus. While the information on this slide provides an overview of the factors that will be taken into consideration for a return to school as it relates to my recommendation, it is important to know that these considerations will include but are not limited to an appropriate decline in COVID nineteen cases for Hampton, Virginia via the state, uh, COVID nineteen tool that was released for localities in which the local health departments have access to and will continue to work closely with them. And also guidance from, uh, Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and the realities in Hampton, Virginia. As well as guidance from the Virginia Department of Health and realities in our local community right here in Hampton, Virginia. At this time, Ms. Kate Maxlow will provide, uh, you as a board with an overview of the framework of our one hundred percent virtual model for all students. And then that will be followed by Ms. Kim Judge, our Director of Special Education, who will provide an overview of the work associated with how we will deliver and continue to serve our young people with disabilities in a one hundred percent virtual model. Um, and so at this time, let me, uh, ask that Ms. Kate Maxwell, um, if you would, uh, continue the discussion.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Chairman Kilgore, Vice Chairman Woodhouse, School Board Members, Dr. Smith, and the Hampton Community. Um, I am here to talk today about the virtual learning experience that our students will have when they come back to us. Um, so revisions to our phase one plan upon learning that we would be having to do one hundred percent virtual. Um, it will be for all students. We will have devices provided to all students in pre-K through twelve. Um, our goal is to get Chromebooks into the hands of all of our students. As you may know, Chromebooks are backordered in much of the United States right now as a lot of our school divisions are turning to all virtual methods. We do however have enough, uh, various other devices that we can ensure that all students in K through twelve and, um, those students in pre-K who need devices are able to have some sort of device so that they can start the year, um, immediately and not have to wait for those Chromebooks. Um, we are going to have, we're go, we, um, are going to have students use Zoom and students will be required to keep their cameras on, although, uh, there will be opportunities for limited exceptions if a family contacts the teacher and the administrator and works that out ahead of time. And the reason that we're doing that is really so that teachers can better, um, look at engagement for students in order to be able to provide more feedback. Uh, we are also in the middle of developing expectations regarding attendance and grading. We know that there will have to be some flexibility in some of that. Um, we've heard from a lot of parents on our committees for these various, um, return to school measures, and so we, we are aware of that. And our phase one FAQ section has been revised to include updated questions and sample schedules for each level that can be found by going to the HCS homepage. So I just wanted to walk everyone through a sample phase one elementary schedule. Um, this would be for pre-K through two and you see that we have a group A, which is an AM group. So the idea behind this is that we would give parents a little bit of flexibility in deciding if they want to have the majority of their instruction in the morning or in the afternoon in order to better meet their particular schedules. So here you can see, just this, this is a sample of a student's schedule, um, not necessarily a teacher's schedule, but, but the student's schedule. And so a student would be going from around eight o'clock to nine fifteen, although these times could be, um, up to building administrators to determine the specific times and not every student would be on there for all seventy-five minutes. The teacher may choose to do small groups. She may keep some students for remediation, et cetera. Um, we would also have time for a morning meeting where teachers can actually, uh, connect with students and talk about social emotional learning. We know that that's going to be an area where a lot of our students will need some extra work. Um, and then nine thirty to ten fifty-five will be the, the reading block and we will have social studies integrated into the reading block. So a lot of the read allows and things that they do will cover those social studies concepts. Again, students will not be online that entire time. Uh, we built in time for small group. Um, so trying to keep in mind the idea of appropriate screen time limits for students. And then we also are going to have something called flex modules. So all the rest of these are live Zoom meetings. That's why you see the asterisk right there. And then we're also going to have flex modules that will be posted in Google Classroom, um, in order for parents and students to access and complete at a time of their choosing. So that way, parents can give their students a break, um, and some of the flex modules such as resource, some of the resources may also be, um, optional, but giving those parents who want extra time for their kids a little bit more and flex modules may include things like videos of teachers. They may have activities for students to complete online. They may have, um, extra reading, et cetera. And then we have the same thing for our B group. So again, we're going from, uh, starting at twelve and then finishing off around two fifty-five, but you do see all of the same things, although the flex modules here obviously would be happening more likely in the morning time. Gets a little bit different when we get to grades three, four, and five. I'm only going to show you a grade five schedule. Um, the grade three schedule was similar to the pre-K through two and the grade four is very similar to grade five and I'll tell you where the difference is there. The big difference is that we are adding an explicit instruction and live Zoom meetings around, um, science. And in grade four, we're going to do that around social studies. Um, so students will actually have thirty minutes of science each day. And then of course Friday is still going to be office hours for teachers to do planning, contacting parents, grading, and then remediation with students as necessary. Um, and then you can see we also have our math blocks. These students will still get their morning meeting and then we will have our reading and writing. And then once again, the group B schedule that would take place in the afternoon. Middle school, um, this is a sample middle school student schedule, not a teacher's schedule. Um, so a student would basically have their, their usual schedule, but instead of a ninety-minute block, we would be cutting it down to a one-hour block. And the reason for that again is trying to really keep in mind those screen time limits so that students are not on a computer for an entire day. Um, but other than that, so you can see this is an example, students would have their English class every day. A student would have their math class every day. We give them a nice break for lunch, which you also saw in the elementary schedules. And then on Monday, they might have science and health PE and then on Tuesday, they would have social studies and their chosen elective and going back and forth between those two. And then again, Friday would be used for office hours and planning, grading, and remediation. High school looks very similar. Again, this is a student's schedule, not a teacher's schedule. Um, and so what you would see is again, they're going to have all eight of their blocks that they would normally have on an A day and a B day. But once again, we're cutting the times down to an hour each rather than an hour and a half each. And you'll also notice that we did give them time between each class, so they get a fifteen-minute break between the first and the second class. Then they get, um, an hour and forty-five minutes and then another fifteen-minute break here just because we want to make sure that students have the opportunity to stand up, stretch, et cetera. And we're also going to work with teachers on how to incorporate things like movement into the classes, um, so that students are not sitting still for hours at a time. This is an example of a double-block mathematics schedule that a student might have at the high school level. Some of our students, um, will take math every single day. And so here you can see what that would look like with only one of the electives potentially for world language. So what, um, the, we've recently put out a survey in order to capture data for phase three scenario two. This is originally what we were hoping we were going to be able to do until Dr. Smith cited the current, um, case rise here in Hampton City Schools, but we still hope to be able to get to this sometime, hopefully this school year. Um, and so we have asked all parents to complete a survey via the parent portal by, um, August tenth, twenty twenty, which it's, uh, lets them choose if they want to be one hundred percent virtual and stay that way, or if they would want to come to school for two days a week. And if they were to come to school for those two days a week, which two days would it be? It also asks them about transportation preferences, et cetera. Um, we are expecting one hundred percent response rate by August seventeenth. And so there is a plan for schools to follow up with parents and families who have not completed this survey by August tenth. Um, we're doing this through Power School because that and the parent portal, because that allows us to customize reports and make it much easier in order for scheduling purposes. Um, and then we will also use that as a part of the planning process for the eventual return to in, in-school learning. Um, and we have made updates to the website for phase three scenario two. We released those on July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, sent out information to all parents so that they could make an informed decision on this survey. We've also completed a lot of frequently asked questions. There are a lot of questions around building this new way of teaching and learning. Um, and so we have linked all of these in the presentation that you all have. They go very much into depth, a lot more than we are doing here tonight. Um, and all, these are all posted on our return to school website as well. Just a few, a little bit more miscellaneous information about phase one. Um, we see here it says creative use of staff to meet student needs. So we're not looking at necessarily one teacher only interacting with the students at the elementary level. Students will also potentially interact with people such as their reading specialist, the ERIA's instructional assistants, et cetera. Trying to get, um, some of those class-sized groups down in order for kids to receive more individualized instruction. You may also see teachers collaborating with some of the resource teachers, adding in music or art to their lessons in order to keep kids more engaged and meet more of those, um, social emotional needs. We are still going to provide special education timelines and services. Ms. Judge will be talking more about that after I am done. Um, and we have given teachers a ton of resources to support effective teaching in a virtual setting. I'm going to talk more about those in a minute. We have been redoing our curriculum as well. We know that after March thirteenth, there was some learning loss for students. And so we are looking at how we can address that while continuing to use the correct, the correct grade level curriculum for students as well. And we have been seeking stakeholder feedback throughout all of this. We have had parents, community members, teachers, principals, et cetera, on all of our committees in order to determine this return to school. We've also, um, through my department, done a huge survey for parents and teachers and students to tell us what worked and what could have been improved about, uh, the virtual learning experience that happened in the spring. And we've used the, all of those results in order to make decisions. That final report is still being compiled, but I have been reviewing the data as it's been coming in. So how we're going to support teachers, um, we are going to have that pre-service time, uh, those days that teachers come back before students come back. Um, and our curriculum instruction and assessment or CIA team, uh, we're going to do that one hundred percent virtual. And the reason for that is partially, uh, of course, um, staff safety, but also the ability to then model what virtual pedagogy should look like, um, when, in the various content areas. We're also going to have our usual understanding by design sessions, um, where we also integrate social emotional learning and talk about how that interacts with the overall curriculum instruction and assessment expectations for the year. We have also implemented some required technology training for all teachers, knowing that they would have to be doing this one hundred percent virtual learning and using some of those lessons learned that we, um, over the last spring and summer, we have decided that all teachers are going to receive training on using Google Classroom effectively, how to use Zoom effectively, how to create engaging online lessons using Google Slides. Um, the differences between virtual classroom management and in-classroom management, because the pedagogies and the management tools are very different. And then also using Google Calendar. Um, and some of the reasons for this were that we heard from parents and students that it was very difficult in many ways to keep up with their virtual assignments, um, especially when it was done all through email. They weren't necessarily sure what was due when. So for that reason, we have implemented systems. Um, all teachers will be using Google Classroom. Uh, that was another thing that we heard was that frequently teachers were using various platforms and parents found that very confusing, especially if they had multiple children. Um, and so we've also given teachers ways to make Google Classroom more user-friendly by using things like due dates on assignments, because those integrate then onto Google, a Google Calendar that can be shared with parents so they can see exactly when their student is supposed to be in class and what is due when, um, all on one nice neat page. Uh, we've also been training our administrators. So we, um, well, we didn't get, we did August third training, thank goodness, because yesterday was a very interesting day for all of us. Um, but we did talk to them about creating a virtual master schedule of all of their Zoom meetings. We're going to use Google Slides. That will allow administrators, curriculum team members, and division leadership team members to still conduct observations of teacher learning through Zoom. Um, we're also going to, we haven't done this yet, but it is on our list of things to do is to create a new form specifically for observing online observations, because I said, as I said, the pedagogy for online lessons is a little bit different than in person. Um, we are going to be training principals on how to review their teachers' Google Classrooms to ensure that teachers are meeting the expectations so that parents and students know what is, they're supposed to be doing. Um, and then also just other ways that they can support communication expectations between the teachers and families. One more thing that we're doing that I'm particularly proud of, um, is having some of our teachers who are all-stars, not only in teaching in person, but also in teaching online. We are going to have them create a bank of high-quality online lessons that will encourage high student engagement and interaction. We know that interaction is one of the most important things when hosting a li, a live lesson on Zoom. And for that reason, we are going to have some of our teachers who have already mastered these concepts help to make it a little bit easier for those who may not currently feel as comfortable in the online teaching realm. We're going to have that for grades K through eight specifically in the core content areas. Those lessons are currently being developed, um, and we will have the first nine weeks ready to go, um, close to when school starts, at least the first four weeks before school starts. And at this time, I am going to turn it, turn this over to Ms. Kim Judge, who will then walk you through her presentation.
Thank you, um, Ms. Maxlow. And Ms. Maxlow serves as our Director of Innovation and Professional, uh, Learning. So thank you for sharing it. So in essence, um, Ms. Kate Maxlow provided, uh, you as members of the board with an overview of, um, what virtual learning might look like, um, if the board accepts the, uh, superintendent's, uh, recommendation uh, for a one hundred percent, uh, virtual model for, for all students. So you have some context as to, uh, what that would, uh, look like going forward, uh, based upon, uh, your, your action. Um, at this time, Ms., uh, Kim Judge, our Director of Special Education, will give you some context, um, as it relates to, uh, the work associated uh, in her department and all that we're doing, um, to ensure that, uh, we're addressing, uh, the needs of all of our students and certainly our learners, uh, with disabilities. So Ms., uh, Ms. Judge?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Smith. Good evening, Chairperson, Chairman Kilgore, Vice Chair Woodhouse, members of the board, Superintendent Smith, and our Hampton community. I come before you this evening to outline the teaching and learning for our students with disabilities when school starts in the fall. As Dr. Smith express, expresses on all in numerous occasions, our strategic plan must always be at the forefront. And so my time with you this evening will stress or outline the systems approach to support staff as we work to educate our students with disabilities, disabilities via a virtual platform or the platform in which we identify as to, to be most appropriate. As everyone is aware, Governor Northam did provide a comprehensive plan for guidance for reopening the school. That plan clearly stated that all students are expected to cover new content over the course of the school year. So understanding that that's the expectation and under, knowing that Hampton City Schools works to ensure academic excellence for every student, every day, whatever it takes, we're charting a course for serving our students with disabilities by leading learning, ensuring compliance, and leading ourselves than others. So let's take a look at what leading and leading learning will look like. When supporting us, the special population, Hampton City Schools will continue to adhere to the provisions of a free, appropriate public education for our students with disabilities in all the phases that are presented and approved by the school board. Services are intended to provide students with disabilities with equitable access to the curriculum. Expectations on service implementation will be clearly outlined and have been clearly outlined and explicitly followed throughout the course of the school year. So let's look at some service delivery models. Um, we do have a continuum of services as is required by federal and state mandates. But we do have students who are, and we do have students who are served in the general curriculum setting, which is inclusion. So those student services, if it is a virtual platform, um, as recommended by Dr. Smith, would look like, um, would mirror what Ms. Maxlow presented earlier for general education students. The only difference is that their services will be provided via a collaborative model or whatever their IP outlines. So special education teachers will be working collaboratively with their, um, content area counterparts to ensure that their services and accommodations are all provided. Additionally, the adaptive curriculum, which is some, um, more intense services for our students who have some more significant needs. So that may be in a self-contained model or a modified model. Those services would be identified and outlined based on curriculum needs as well, the adaptive curriculum needs as well as IPs. And then related services. I know there were questions and some concerns about the implementation and the follow-up and follow-through with regard to that. But those services will be provided in an online format, either in small group or one-to-one settings as appropriate for the student. And all of this is individualized based on the student's needs, and I will go into further detail shortly. So what might that look like for student, for a student with a disability? Just as Ms. Maxlow outlined for you earlier, here are some sample schedules and I do have sample teacher schedules. And I will reiterate that these are sample schedules. So here are sample schedules for teachers and then it'll be followed by a sample schedule for a student. Um, with regard to general curriculum students, the same schedule that Ms. Maxlow showed previously for every grade level would be that same schedule that general, um, education students or inclusion students would be afforded. The only insertion would be that a special education teacher would be providing the IP time and the IP service, services. So here is a self-contained classroom, um, or a self-contained special education teacher schedule, a sample schedule. Um, if we're looking at a group A or a group B, there is some overlap in time when we get down to the eleven o'clock timeframe, because we would be looking to do some whole group reading instruction. And that gives an opportunity for us to, um, truly develop or re-establish that learning community and have a sense of belonging and kids connecting with one another. So here isn't, here is a look at what services could look like or what times would look like for a teacher's schedule from eight to half-day, twelve-thirty, and then also moving forward from that eleven-thirty timeframe until the end of the day. So here's what the student's schedule would look like if it's a student in group A. They would start with some intensive reading, so it's still very aligned with what the general education students would be afforded. So they would still be receiving their reading, their, uh, math, and then some integration, some, um, content integration. And then also with those flex modules as well. This follows that same schedule and it's a sample for, um, students that would be in the later day, or later part of the, the day with group B. Then here is a teacher flex. Here's a teacher's schedule for an adaptive class, um, if it's a full day. So some of our students are with a teacher for a full day due to the nature and severity of their disability. So if that were the case, then this is a sample schedule, of course, with modifications by building administrators and accommodating the student and parent needs, uh, family needs. This would be something that would be proposed and my, um, staff, team, and coordinators would be working to help make adjustments to this as appropriate for the student and the families. Here's a student sample for that Monday through Friday if they have one teacher due to nature and severity of their disability. Again, notice that we are covering all of those content areas, providing individualized services, and also ensuring the IP, um, And also ensuring that IP, um, goals and object, goals, objectives, as well as accommodations are addressed. Next, we're looking at charting our course through ensuring compliance, and this is a big piece for us because we want to make sure that we ensure fidelity. Of instructional services that are provided to students. So school teams will work to ensure that all students with disabilities have a current IP. And that all timelines are met. Services, as noted on the student's IP, will be implemented with fidelity to the extent that ensures equitable access. To the instruction via the current, current learning, um, platform, and then all other meetings. So the train or component reviews and eligibilities will be held prior to the due date. And we have worked, um, very diligently, um, since school closure to try to meet those timelines and have worked diligently with parents. And we've been very pleased with the parent involvement, um, to ensure that IP's and all of these other events have, um, events is what we call them. In our software system, but all of these other meetings have been addressed and addressed timely. So that we can ensure that we're addressing needs of students as well as, um, providing services as noted in their IP. So now let's move into talking about leading ourselves and others. This is something that's a big piece of what we are, um, working to, um. To communicate in order to ensure that there is consistency across the board and that all expectations are, um. Clearly identified and not just clearly identified up, excuse me, not just clearly identified, but also. That there is cohesiveness, excuse me. Get back to my shared. Okay, and that there's cohesiveness and what needs to be happening. And so we talk about, um. We talk about leading ourselves and others, and so we have a team, we have that systems approach. So we have coordinators who will be providing training. For student, for the teachers on instructional planning and delivery, uh, via the ver- virtual model. If that model is something that is accepted by the board. So what exactly does that specifically designed instruction look like virtually? That will be explicitly outlined and identified, and we'll work through that with teachers and during the pre-service. Support for school teams on effective implementation of instruction via the school model that we open up in, open back up in, in the fall with. And also monitoring compliance of timelines in addition to review and disaggregation of data. Um, state, data for state reporting and monitoring and participation in IP's, um, per the request of building administrators or parents. So special education teachers, what will be expected of them? They'll be expected to collect our, our connect with individual students and parents on their roster. So they're considered roster teachers. It's extremely important that we develop a sense of community and have that connectedness. In order for the learning community to be effective and for students to feel, um, that they are valued members of that, that, um, school. That class, culture and climate. So we'll work diligently with that and will, that the roster teachers will collaborate with their inclusion teachers. Or with their school, with their student teams to make sure that that's put in place. We'll also create learning opportunities, um, that are accessible for students, um, to help them continue to learn. Will plan, um, and lead synchronous and acr- asynchronous, so via Zoom. And also some off-time learning activities that are individualized based on the student's IP, IPs to the extent possible. In addition to that, special education teachers will be responsive to students, parents and their colleagues. So not just to students and parents, but the expectation is still that, um, collaborative teachers are working cohesively together. And there is that team approach to address the needs of students. Also set and communicate hours for individualized support with students, um, and, and that addresses the needs of those, the families that we are serving. Um, schedule, prepare and actively participate in IP meetings and eligibility meetings. And participate in any professional developments that are provided by, for, by the school division. We also have instructional assistants, and yes, those instructional assistants built will be required to be providing and supporting. As they are required throughout the course of a school year if we were in a traditional model. So the instructional assistants will collaborate with the special education teacher and support the students during whole group instruction as well as small group instruction. Additionally, they'll continue to do the work of modifying instructional materials as noted in IP per the directive of the special education teacher. They'll assist the teacher with providing the accommodate, accommodations to, to the student and their collect data. Um, as directed by the special education teacher on the student's IP goals. So supporting our students' learning through a systems approach requires for me that we make sure that we have some tracking. Uh, a tracking tool in place to address those needs, and we put this tracking tool in place, uh, when we had the mandated school closure. Um, by Go- Governor Northam that started, um, March the thirteenth. This, this tool actually went into effect right after spring break. But here's an example of what an instructional tracking tool would look like for students who are, um, who, specially students. Who are receiving instruction virtually, should that be approved by the board. So here we have teachers, each teacher would have one by school and it would be, um, outlined by students. And so it, it tracks not just the date, but what's the subject area focus, the amount of time that the services were rendered. What those accommodations and modifications were that provided, any other additional, um, individualized supports. With students' response and any other notes. So sometimes the parent standing over them and they may have some clarifying questions. Or something that the teacher may need to get back with them on. Here's a tool that documents and supports this. Not only does the building administrator have access to this, but also the special education coordinator that supports that building has access. Access to it. So in the event that there are questions that may come up with regard to services and supports. The fidelity of implementation or the effectiveness of the services that we are rendering to students. Here is a tool that we can pull up and we can look at and also have a data tracker to see what needs to be refi- refined. So when we talk about related service personnel, I'll delve a little bit into each one of those related service personnel. We do have students who have primary disability category of speech and language impairment, and we also have students that receive this service as a related service. So those individuals will be required to provide small group and or one-to-one instruction via a virtual and online instructional, um, setting. As deemed appropriate, those supports will help students to access communication and participation in their learning environment. And by that, what I mean is that, let's say a student, um, has a difficulty with some soft skills. So turn-taking as an example is, um, a, a speech and language goal that they may have. And so the speech and language pathologist will come on in the Zoom, um, classroom, in the, on Zoom, in the classroom with the student. And may work to probably possibly model or put some things in place to help the student to, um, identify how to raise their hand. Or if they have whiteboards, how to hold up a whiteboard, or if they have, um, a Chromebook that allows them to be interactive and write on the screen, then they can do that. So just teaching them how to have voice and choice, um, is, is a speech and language pathologist's skill or goal. That could be, that could possibly be a part of a student's IP. So the speech and language pathologist will work to that end. Collaborating to problem solve around challenges that may occur within the distance learning. So that was partly an example of what I provided. Um, when I was talking about access to communication and participation. Additionally, they'll work to develop instructional activities and strategies to support the student in that virtual environment. They'll consult with the student as well as the families to address any questions and offer some guidance. Additionally, they'll provide some resources to support the learning. So, um, a lot of times we feel like learning has to be something that's. Uh, like a sit and get, and we're not growing damn frights. So we want to make sure that kids are up and active and engaged in their learning. And so there are opportunities for us to, without families feeling, I know I'm a parent too, so I get it. I don't want to always feel like I'm having to sit and get my child to death in order for him to get then the education or the services that he needs. And so if I create a game while I'm cooking dinner and it may be just, um, word ID or, you know, turns, uh, turn-taking. So if I ask you a question, I have to sit quietly until you answer my question. It's an information, information-seeking question. It requires an answer, an information, um, answer. So to provide that information back, so we can play that game, do some turn-taking. And I'm just, I'm using one example, but that goes, that leads into providing real-time support to fans, students and, um, families. And also participating in professional development. We move on to occupational and physical therapists. Again, they'll be providing that, those same things. Um, providing small, small group and one-on-one instruction, um, the virtually and online resources to help parents when appropriate. Um, consult and also collaborate with the school staff to make sure that the students' needs are being addressed. Some of that real-time supports again will come into play, resources that can be put in place to help, um, support in the home. And one of the things I've learned and I've actually, as we've had to move to a virtual, um, we were forced into a virtual model due to this pandemic. Um, we can be and are very innovative as educators, and so we've been able to really stretch out that process. And think very creatively and strategically about what those resources need to look like that are not as cumbersome. Or shouldn't be as cumbersome to families if we are implementing them and putting those structures and supports in place in an appropriate manner. So also, um, preparing them and actively participating in IP meetings, eligibilities and professional development. We also have, um, hearing and vision impairment specialists. Those individuals will be, um, required to do exactly the same thing. I won't belabor it by repeating everything that I stated before, but I will also, I will just state that we don't have a large population. Of students who are hearing or vision impaired, but every one of our students requires the same level of support. And, um, structures that are identified on their IP. So we make sure that we with fidelity address each of those needs. And, um, the one at the bottom is very key to me, collaborate and problem solve around challenges that occur within the learning environment. Additionally, they'll do the real time and they'll also participate in professional development. We are very, um. I'm very, very purposeful at this point in time. I have been since I came into Hampton City Schools, but more intentionally now. With being as explicit as possible with regard to expectations, um, when it comes to service delivery and how that needs to look for our students with disabilities. We have educational interpreters, so they will be attending class with students because they actually help the students. They are the students' voice. So they'll be, um, helping the students to communicate and interpret the lessons. They'll consult and collaborate with the schools, with the school staff regarding the students' needs. Um, provide some resources for the in-home and also participate and actively, um, pre- prepare. And actively participate in all of those meetings as well as, as well as professional development. So if families have questions, what should they do or where should they go? So based on the inquiries and the needed supports. Please make sure that you contact your child's school first. They will address any questions and concerns. Or they'll direct you to the coordinator that is assigned to support your child's school. Again, I pride myself in truly, truly believing that Hampton City Schools is one division, one transformation. We are working, um, on enhancing our inclusive practices for all students. Um, this is uncharted times. And unprecedented times that we are all in, but we are working to ensure that we are addressing the needs of every child, every day, whatever it takes. And that, that's not just the academic needs, but that's also the social emotional development of our students with disabilities. So we have to stay the course. So we will make sure that we continue, um, to keep our free, appropriate. Public school education obligations at the forefront of our decision-making, taking into account the needs circumstan- needs and circumstances of our students. Families and our staff during these challenging times. We will ensure that all IP's, trying new component reviews and eligibility meetings. Are compliant, and we will continue to make good faith efforts to serve our students with disabilities. Thank you, and now I'll turn it back over to Kate, Ms. Maxlow.
Thank you, Ms. Judge. And at this time, um, we're delighted to have with us Ms. Edwina Forrest, who's going to provide an overview. Uh, as it relates to, um, our school nutrition services here in Hampton. And should we move, uh, into a one hundred percent, uh, virtual model for, um, all students. Uh, Ms. Forrest, our Director of, um, School Nutrition Services, will share with you what that will look like in terms of service delivery. So at this time, uh, Ms. Edwina Forrest, please.
Good evening, Mr. Kilgore, um, Vice Chair, Dr. Woodhouse, Board Members, Dr. Smith, and our Hampton community. I thank you for giving me this moment to speak about food and nutrition services. Food and nutrition services has been at the forefront for feeding our students since our governor's school closure. Starting March sixteenth, my staff has been, um, there to ensure that our students. Have had their breakfast and lunch during this pandemic. We have always believed that school nutrition professionals were essential to our communities that we serve. But through this pandemic, everyone across the state, across our states has truly realized our significance. Through this unanticipated closure at nine sites and with thirty-eight employees as of July the twenty-fourth. We have served over a hundred and thirty-two thousand breakfasts, over a hundred and thirty-three thousand lunches. Served over a hu- almost a hundred and ninety-three thousand pints of milk. Provided our families seventeen thousand, almost eighteen thousand bulk produce. We have received donations of T-shirts from our community, toothbrushes and recycled tote bags. For our students and our families. We've also had twenty-five volunteer individuals who have volunteered. To assist us, um, in our, in our program. Starting June seventeenth, Food and Nutrition Services partner with Parks, Recreation and Leisure Services. And this is something that we do every summer. And this partnership has allowed, um, Parks and Rec, excuse me, provides, um, our students, our children. A meal and a snack every day, every day. So even though we are in the midst of a pandemic since June seventeenth, through our partnership with Parks and Rec. The children of Hampton City have had the opportunity to have three meals and a snack every day. Next slide. Regardless of the platform, um, the educational platform that is voted upon, Food and Nutrition Services. Will be prepared to continue to feed, um, our students of Hampton, Hampton City Schools. Next slide. As we gear up for the twenty twenty-one school year, families will need to apply for free and reduced meal benefits. All Hampton City Schools families will receive a notification letter, providing them guidance on how to apply for these benefits. Some of our households may be eligible for free benefits without having to complete a meal benefit application. And these households will be notified by August thirty-first that they do not have to apply, have to complete a meal benefit application. Other households, if they do not receive an eligibility letter, um, by August thirty-first. Then they will need to complete a free and reduced meal benefit application. And a new, um, benefit application must be completed each year, um, for households. Next slide. So in feeding our students during a hundred percent virtual learning. We are looking at opening the following sites that you have before you. With service between ten and twelve-thirty. Students will be provided a breakfast and a lunch will be available for them. We will ensure that all households receive, um, detailed communication regarding the meal distribution. Before, um, school starts. And it is our mission to provide school meals and encourage healthy choices to fuel, um, successful learning. I do thank you. I'll turn it back over to Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Forrest. Um, and at this time, um, Ms. Robin Ruth, uh, will provide you with an overview as it relates to, uh, human resources. And the functions within human resources, uh, should we move in a one hundred percent, uh, virtual model for, for all students. So, uh, Ms. Ruth serves as our Executive Director for Human Resources. Ms. Ruth?
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Um, and good evening, uh, Chairman Kilgore. Vice Chair Woodhouse, Board Members and, uh, Community. Um, in terms of work expectations, I think it is important to note that we are working to avoid furlongs. So long as we continue to receive adequate funding, um, and we are also working diligently to identify alternate assignments. Um, so that those folks who may not have. Work when we are in an all-virtual setting, if we open in an all-virtual setting, um, so that there would be, um. Work that is available. So that there would be work that is available for them. We do have a group that is working to identify what those alternate, alternate assignments will be. And employees will be contacted as assignments are identified. In terms of the summer schedule, in the summer schedule for 11, 11 and a half and 12 month employees. Will continue through August 21st, 2020, regardless of whether we open in a virtual setting or not. This is our four-day work schedule, beginning on August 24th. We will return to a five-day-a-week schedule. And this is the schedule we will follow if we open in an all-virtual setting. School buildings and departments will be open from 8:00, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM throughout the week. And will be open to the public by an appointment-only basis. And for employees, these office hours include a 30-minute lunch. For the folks that are in our school operations and maintenance departments and also our automotive mechanics. They will actually continue to work their normal schedule Monday through Friday. They start earlier in the morning because it is very hot still in the summer. So they will work their normal hours rather than the 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM shift. Employee work schedules will remain the same. So if you're a teacher and you work six point, or 7.25 hours per day. You would continue to work 7.25 hours a day and you will still report to work on August 26th. If you are an IA and you work 6.75 hours, you would continue to work those 6.75 hours. And that would begin on August 8th. Teachers will report to the buildings three days per week. And other employees will receive specific instructions from their immediate supervisor. But we do anticipate that folks will be reporting to the building for at least a part of the week. Next, thank you, Kate. In terms of pay and leave, full-time employees will be, continue to be paid based on the hours that are listed on either their contract or letter of employment. For non-exempt employees, please be sure that you are clocking in. And utilizing Cronos, whether you're working onsite or from a work remote location. This has not changed. This is the same practice we have been using since March 16th. Things have changed a bit for part-time hourly employees. Part-time hourly employees will be paid for all hours worked. So again, super important for non-exempt employees to make sure that they are clocking in and out utilizing Cronos. Whether working onsite or remotely. If we have any part-time employees who work a reduced schedule. If we go to an all-virtual setting, they may be eligible for partial unemployment. And there's information about that on. An employee FAQ. For part-time teachers, they will be paid based on the hours that are listed on their contract. So that's a little bit different than say a part-time secretary. Alright, and again, in terms of pay and leave, employees are expected to use the appropriate leave for all absences. And if we've got employees who are not able to perform the alternate assignment that they are given, they must notify their immediate supervisor. And we will work with them to ensure that we find an alternate assignment that does meet their skills and abilities. If an employee is not able to report to their work site due to a COVID-19 related reason. Be that childcare or they fall into a high-risk category, they may be eligible for leave under the Family Coronavirus Response Act. Or FF-CRA. We have again, information about that on our website. We're also working with employees to put in place reasonable accommodations to ensure that they can continue working. Next, we did send out an employee survey last week. And for planning purposes, we need to identify whether or not employees are able to report to the work site as needed. And/or whether or not they're intending to request some sort of reasonable accommodation. Last, I checked earlier this afternoon, about 2,000 of our 3,200 employees had responded to the survey. So we've had great, great response so far. The last day for submitting your return-to-work survey is tomorrow, August 6th. And we do assume if, if we don't receive a response from you, that you will be at work as needed. On whatever your reporting date is. For those who have indicated they need some sort of reasonable accommodation, they either have already received additional information. Or will be receiving it on the 6th or 7th, depending on when they complete the survey. As I indicated earlier, we do have some FAQs for employees, frequently asked questions. On both just general information about what a virtual opening would look like. And also on the FF-CRA, that information. You do have to be on your Hampton City Schools email address to access that information. And somebody can email me directly if they are having problems with access. And I believe I am going to turn it back over to Dr. Smith now.
Thank you, Ms. Robin Ruth. And at this time, Nurse Gill will provide an overview. Of the health mitigations as it relates to our health mitigation plan.
Good evening Chairman Gilgore, Vice Chair Woodhouse, School Board Members, Dr. Smith, Administrative Members and the HCS Community. My name's Glory Gill and I oversee the Health Services Operations. One of the things that I'll tend to talk about is sort of a, both virtual and if we're in school kind of presentations. So hopefully that will not be too confusing. As to the general, what we're expecting of our employees and our students. And their parents, of course, is to do a self-paced or self-screening, if you will, for any illnesses that they may have. What we're hoping for is that everyone participates as a family, as a team and says, you know, if I'm not feeling well. If I have any of these symptoms listed, that I will stay home. And that's going to be critical for us to maintain a healthy environment for not only our employees. But also when the students come back for our, our students as well. And these are posted, will be posted, if not already, on our Hampton City Schools website. So that both parents and employees can look at that. And all of this is based on what the CDC guidelines are. We included two new ones, the loss of appetite, taste and smell, and also new skin rash, as those are also progressing. So sometimes as you get information, or as we get information, we will be updating our information as well. Next slide, please. Staff guidelines on protection, we have face coverings that will be, all face, excuse me. Face coverings will be required for all employees, except those with medical documentation. There are some due to medical issues that they cannot wear that. But we, we are providing both a cloth face covering, one for each staff member. But we are also providing face shields for every staff member and that will help to accommodate those, those. Employees that can't wear a mask by itself. So hopefully that will help with that. But they are going to be given both of those and they can wear their own cloth face covering. We, we're not requiring them to only wear what we provide. We're also encouraging physical distancing from others, even with the face covering on. Six feet is recommended. As we progress through our phases, we may have as small as three feet. But regardless, we're encouraging everyone to try to keep the distance as they can and to keep their face masks on. And then of course, as we do throughout the school year, nurses encourage good health hygiene measures. And that's wash, wash, wash your hands. The best thing to prevent obviously germs being passed along is to wash your hands with soap and water. That's the key. When we don't have soap and water capabilities, for whatever reason. There is hand sanitizers that will be around the building as well as in classrooms and main offices. We also will have encouraging throughout the school year, covering your sneeze and coughs. We do this anyway. But this is going to be even more important. The face mask will prevent when I sneeze or cough or talk, my droplets spreading to somebody else. That's where, so then the other person is, needs to wear their face mask as well so that they prevent those droplets. So again, I've talked about physical distancing, whether you're wearing with or without your mask in certain areas. We strongly, strongly keep reiterating, I so to speak, stay home when symptoms arise or exposure to a COVID case has occurred. We also are going to hold each other accountable as part of a family. We, we have to hold each other accountable in doing the health measures that we, we've asked. And just a friendly reminder, you know, that if you're coming into a room and they don't have a face mask on. You just hold at the door and wait till they get it on. Cause sometimes, you know, when you're in by yourself, you don't have to wear that face mask. And then I, I would be remiss if I didn't talk about self-care for everyone, self-care for our kids, self-care for our parents. Self-care for our own employees. This is a very stressful time for all of us. And, but we can make it through and we can do this together if we take care of ourselves and don't overdo it. So next slide, please. So for our employees, if they're sick at work, there are measures set up so that they can contact. If there's, when there's a nurse in the building, they're going to be interviewed and assessed there. And if they're not, if they're in a non-school or don't have a nurse in their building, they can contact me and we will do assessment over the phone. I've been doing that through the summertime. And then we'll advise on how long they need to stay out of work, if they need to be seen by a provider and those kind of things. If we find that we do have an employee, and for that matter, if we have a student that has COVID-like symptoms. One of my critical jobs during this time will be to contact the Hampton Health Department. Who has been a very integral part of our team, if you will, keeping us up to date on different things related to COVID. And the requirements, but they also will be my, my hotline, if you will, as to what we should do next. And once I know that we need to make accommodations or change things around. Isolate a staff member or whatever that's necessary based on what they've said. I will contact the Executive Director and then process will take place of administrator. And notifying not only the employees, but also teachers, excuse me, the parents and the students as well. If we need to close a score and close down a classroom. The information that we do gather will be kept in a COVID, a confidential COVID database. And that's just to monitor and keep track of things. One of the things that we do normally during the flu season is we keep track of the numbers that we're having. Well, this is even more critical so that we will keep that database and, and that way I can communicate how many we have and what's going on. So next slide, please. Sickness while in school, this applies to the students. We don't assume that the symptoms that they state they have are COVID. They could be flu symptoms, they could be gastric kind of symptoms, summer cold. So it's important that we don't assume that and cause anxiety to the child that's there. We need to remember confidentiality. One of the biggest things that can happen is if we start saying, oh, the person with the, the child with the COVID. They have COVID or any of those kind of things that can stress them. It can stress the, the students in the classroom. They can stress the teacher. There's a lot of. Stress that could be that. So we want to just maintain as much confidentiality as we can. The teachers will. First, I'll step back before I tell what the teachers are going to do. We are expecting that each child gets on a bus with their mask on. They'll keep that mask on until they come into the building and go to their classroom. And that's where the teacher is going to do a, just a general assessment. We have posters in every, we'll have posters in every classroom. And the teacher will just basically go through the different symptoms that the student might have. If they say yes to any of them, regardless of whether they really do have them or not, we're going to bring them down to the clinic. And they're going to get an assessment from the nurse, which will include temperature, looking at their respirations and other things that we do as nurses on a ongoing basis. Once the nurse evaluates and says, yes, this looks like COVID, we cannot diagnose anything until you have a test. We'll notify the parent, we'll put the child into a sick area that we have. We've redesigned some of the, many of the schools to have a well and a sick area. And they'll have a mask on, of course, for the, the student in there. And then the student's items will be brought down. We're not going to have the student go back to the classroom any further. And then though ill, staff cannot assume again that I've said that, that it's COVID. And we're utilizing CDC guidelines for any time out of school. And it will be 10 to 14 days, depending upon the symptoms and what Hampton Health Department says. So that sort of getting, giving parents that idea that it is better to keep them home and make sure that it's COVID-related versus sending them to school. And then we find out and have to do our self-quarantining of students and, and employees for that matter. Next slide, please. And then we're requiring the same thing for visitors coming into our building and staff during the summertime. We've been doing this. We provide good customer service. We always have with a smile, but we also want to ensure safety. And so when the, someone comes to the building, they're going to be asked to, greeted by someone saying, you know, please look at the poster that we have on the main entrance. And if you have any of these symptoms, we need you not to enter at this time. We can do a Zoom meeting, a phone call, no contact, you know, basically ways to talk with them other than them coming into the building. If they do come into the building, a mask must be worn by everyone coming in. No mask, no entry is basically how it is, sort of like any grocery store or other place. You need to have that mask on. And it's being safe, but we're, we're trying to be kind, but we want to be safe as well. We're going to set appointments as much as possible. So parents, as you want to come into the buildings, you're going to set the appointment. And that way they know you're coming. We won't have an overcrowding of people coming into the building. So we're doing that safe distancing and things that we're supposed to be doing. We're to have visitors, when you have come to your appointments, you'll be staying in the car and you'll phone into the main office saying, okay, I'm here. And then once they're able to come in, they will. We're going to ensure that you don't have any symptoms. So you'll be asked when you get to that main door again, do you have any of these symptoms? If you do, please, please stay home and we'll, we'll work on getting the things done that we need you to do. And then we're going to have seating set aside so that no one's sitting closer than six feet. And then any parent meetings that need to take place will be, most of the time hopefully on Zoom or a phone call. It should be rare that they have to actually come into the building to have those parent meetings. But if it does and you have to come in, then you'll need to do your mask on, obviously. Any staff meetings that we have, we're going to provide obviously through Zoom meetings as much as possible. But if they do have staff meetings that have to take place where we're in the building. We're going to make sure that everybody's wearing their mask and then in doing the physical distancing. And so that really means for our staffs coming in as well, that we're not going to be doing the large groups together and the congregating that we normally would. That's why when you're coming into the building three days a week, you're going to pretty much stay in your classrooms. And maintain your distance there, that way. Next slide, please. And then these when are available, will be on the website if it's not already. The HCS guidelines for the COVID-related illnesses and the return to school work. We also have a COVID mitigation health plan that the VDOE requires. We have FAQs for the health plan as well. And there is on our website for employees, the employee health questionnaire that you need to look at to self-evaluate whether you should come to work or not. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nurse Gill. And so as you detected and Nurse Gill said on the front end, she provided an overview in terms of. Our health mitigation plans for Hampton City Schools in total, whether that's virtual or in-person. And certainly to ensure that we maintain a healthy and safe workplace and, and environment. So thank you for doing that and covering both areas. At this particular time, Dr. Bowling, our Chief Operating Officer. Will provide an overview as it relates to our cleaning and sanitizing protocols for Hampton City Schools. So thank you, Nurse Gill, who serves as our Coordinator of Health Services. And now to Dr. Bowling.
Oh, good evening. Good evening Chairman Kilgore, Vice Chairman Dr. Woodhouse, members of the board and members of the Hampton community. As Dr. Smith said, my name is Dr. Bowling and I am the Chief Operations Officer for Hampton City Schools. And part of my job is to ensure that we have safe, clean and well-maintained school facilities. But the advent of COVID-19, the clean, AKA sanitation, has really pushed its way to the forefront. On what we need to do to our schools to make them a safe and inviting place for the return of our administrators, teachers. And eventually our students. So what we've had to do is take a look at how we conduct our normal business, the business of cleaning schools. And based on the advice of the CDC, local and state health departments. And also working hand-in-hand with the two professional cleaning agencies that we hired here in Hampton to clean our schools. One of them being AFS and they cleaned all of our elementary schools and Pre-K and Andrews, Andrews and Phoenix, I should say. And then of course ABM, who is responsible for cleaning some of our larger schools, which are our high schools and middle schools. We really sat down and we really had to tease out, what are the best practices that are out there? What are the community standards that exist? What are the community standards that exist surrounding the cleaning and sanitation of public facilities? And we were able to come up, I think, with a pretty strong list of what we are doing to help ensure that our schools are safe for everyone. It all begins with training of employees. If you expect something new of them, you first and foremost have to teach them what it is that they're supposed to be doing. So I've sat down personally with AFS and ABM and we've done this um, in conjunction with one another in group meetings. And we've really gone over what it is that we want our employees to not only know, but also what they are, should be doing each and every day. It first begins with wearing of disposable gloves. So if they're going to be cleaning and moving from room to room or station to station, they need to make sure that they're not cross-contaminating things. So we've talked about how to properly put on gloves, take off gloves, and how often should they be changing these gloves? Also the wearing of mask. Uh, if teachers and students are wearing masks, then of course our custodians as well need to be wearing masks and not only during the day, but also at night cruise as well. Uh, the use of disposable cleaning cloths. Uh, these are cloths are single-use. They would use them when disinfecting or cleaning areas, a small area, and then they would throw it away and get a new cloth there. And of course, this is done again to prevent cross-contamination type of situation. We're also talking about sanitizing of frequent touchpoints and describing what are frequent touchpoints uh, to our custodians. These are areas such as doorknobs, desktop, tabletops, uh, any kind of little knobs or buttons that may be in classrooms or along the hallways that little hands may be touching all the time that we should be able to go through on an hourly basis. You could almost set your watch to it to go through and clean these. And that has to be the expectation and the standard for our employees to go through and constantly spray and wipe down these with disinfectant. We've also moved to using what is known as a quaternary-based cleaner. These are hospital-grade disinfectants. Now there are a number of different producers and brands out there, but each brand has an SDS number and we can pull that SDS number on the EPA standard sheets. And we know that it is specified to kill um, not only bacteria, viruses, mold and any kind of fungus there. So anything that you don't want to have in a building, these are hospital-grade disinfectants that have been approved by the EPA to kill it within that building. We're also going to be using new technologies and these new technologies will assist us in attacking one of the real nemesis of inside of a school building, which is soft materials. These are things such as uh, carpets, drapes, upholstered furniture, anything that has sort of fabric or uh, fuzzy or fabric there. These things are hard to clean. They are, not only they are hard to clean, but they're hard to disinfect. But with these use of these new technologies that we're going to talk about in our next slide here in just a second, they are um, we have a way of attacking that, not only cleaning them, but making sure that we're killing anything that may be in that substance there. We're also going to use specialized detergents. There are certain things that are not single-use within the industry of cleaning buildings. Things like mop heads, dust mops, those real large mops, you see them dusting the halls with. They are, it's not financially feasible to throw them out after every use. These things are typically laundered and then they're put back into use. But just like a hospital, for example, will take uh, sheets or comforters that are on their beds or uh, scrub uniforms, you see nurses and doctors in. Those things get taken down, washed with special detergent there and they're put back on the beds. They're put back onto other doctors and nurses uh, and put back into use, but they've been sanitized. We're going to be using the same sorts of detergents that hospitals use that have that quaternary-based component to them that allow that sanitizing effect. Not only does it clean, but it makes sure it, it kills anything that could be in it. So when we put these items back into our schools, they're clean and safe to go up and down the hallways and in and out of classrooms. We're also going to be able to have deep cleaning of school facilities, uh, whether it's night or weekends or holidays. Or if there's any, as Nurse Gill talked about, reported illnesses, that way, once we are notified, we have a protocol set up that we're able to go in and heavily disinfect these certain areas to make sure that they're safe for the return of students and staff. Next slide, please. Two of the new technologies that I've just mentioned that we're going to be using, and these are two of the, the latest hottest technologies on the market. And we're very fortunate in Hampton that we have been able uh, with the help of ABM and AFS to source these for each of our school buildings. And these will be located um, in every one of our schools and in different numbers depending on the size. Of course, the larger the school, the more of these devices will be there. But the first device I think is very interesting, uh, and I think you'll find interesting, these are known as electrostatic sanitizing sprayers. These are really, really hard to get. There are a number of different manufacturers. The one that we're going to be using uh, is made by a company called Victory. These are Victory electrostatic uh, sanitizing spray guns. Uh, some of them hope with a backpack on the back where they can uh, carry larger amounts of chemical there. But what they do is, it, it's pretty neat. You can go into cars, buses, uh, any sort of transportation vehicle into classrooms. And the way these work is that they will take that same quaternary base disinfectant. And when it sprays that disinfectant, it atomizes into a mist into the air. Uh, it's not like a squirt gun there, but it's a, it's a fine mist. It's sort of fogs that an area of the room. And the way it works is that everything in the world has a charge to it and has the same charge. This device takes the chemical and it charges the chemical to the opposite charge of everything in the world. So just like when you were a child, you know that opposites attract and charge, like two magnets will stick together where they have opposite charge. You probably play, uh, everyone's played with magnets there. That's what this does. So when the chemical goes into the air, it sort of magnetizes it, if you will, and it will stick to doors. It will stick to the top of desk, to vents, to lights, to walls, to curtains, to rugs, all those soft surfaces I was speaking of. It's able to get in there and disinfect. It will even go under desk and stick to the underside of desk, around poles. You don't have to physically spray each little area. You just kind of wave it around and it just saturates that whole area. So it cleans and sanitizes those areas for us. It's a, it's, it's a wonderful, wonderful technology. It's being used by the military. Governments are buying them up like crazy. Um, like I said, we're, we're very lucky to have those. Now, we also are using a different type of machine and these are like industrial atomizers. Some people call them foggers, if you will. They're not really a fogger, but they kind of function the same way. It will take that same quaternary base cleaner and you're able to spray it over very large areas. Where you're going to find these devices, we're going to try to put at least one in every school. But we're going to make sure that we maybe have a couple in our middle schools and high schools because they have some very unique spaces to those. Um, for example, your locker rooms, your gymnasiums, your auditoriums, your cafeterias, some of your band rooms and specialized room shop areas. These are really big areas. They're hard to clean with different sites of tool and equipment in there. But we're able to take these devices and go in there and we can spray because of the amount of mist that comes out. It's not a saturating mist. It's a really light mist. We're able to go in and we can take an auditorium and very quickly and efficiently or a gymnasium, probably thirty minutes with one of these devices from the front all the way to the back, we're able to sanitize that area and make sure it's safe for the next group that comes in. So these are two great technologies and they will be present at each of our schools uh, when we open. Next slide, please. Uh, we're also making sure that when our teachers come back, that they have the proper PPEs and supplies they need so that they feel safe in their classroom as they interact with one another, uh, with other administrators in the building or if parents for meetings or something should show up, uh, or students, they're able to meet with them safely. Um, first and foremost, we're making sure that uh, in large quantities, uh, we've ordered all of this stuff. So disposable gloves, we're going to make sure that each teacher has a box of disposable gloves, not just a little baggie with a few of them. They will have boxes and additional resources or supplies will be stationed at each school. So if a uh, teacher runs out or an aide or a security guard or whoever it may be that needs it at school employee, they simply need to ask the administration and they'll have the stock to give them whatever that they need. Uh, disposable face masks, we've all ordered over thirty-five thousand uh, disposable face masks uh, for um, our employees to use as needed. There we'll have face masks that if a child goes to get on a school bus, once we do come back to school, um, and they should need one, we're able to give them a disposal if they should happen to forget the one that we provide them there. Uh, if they're in class and one should break, the earpiece breaks or doesn't fit correctly, we'll have one for them to use there. Or if they just forget it, we'll have one for them to use. Uh, we're also ordering uh, child and adult-sized face shields uh, to aid um, in the return. If there's some health condition where you can't wear a face mask, we'll have the face shields available for those employees or students. Um, we're going to provide them with spray bottles of the same quaternary disinfectant that they'll, they'll be able to spray. Um, let's say a child sneezes or they feel they've touched, rubbed their face and touched something and they really want to sanitize it before the next child comes. They'll be able to spray that area down, wait the proper kill time, uh, which is about two or five minutes depending on the product. And then simply wipe it down and it'll be perfectly sanitized for the next student there. Uh, we're also providing gallon-sized hand sanitizer to each of the teachers, whole jugs with the pump there. Um, so the, it's there for them to use and then also it's there uh, as well when the student's there. I, I, I jokingly say this stuff is liquid gold, uh, because it is really hard to get in large quantities. We're also going to be working with administrators to make sure that we have stations around the school in the hall. Uh, some freestanding stations that can be moved around, maybe by the entrance door or some other place if something's going on. Uh, maybe at the end of halls, outside the clinic on the wall, outside the cafeteria, inside the cafeteria, outside the bathrooms, different places where they may want them. Um, so the child can go up or an adult can go up. If they're not able to get somewhere to wash their hands, they can quickly access the hand sanitizer and sanitize their hands. We've also ordered fifteen thousand desk shields for our students. These are wonderful. They're very lightweight. They're tri-fold, uh, three sides to them. Um, you can easily set them on the desk. You can manipulate the wings to the size, fit on different sized desks. They're at good heights. Um, they're very lightweight, so if it falls over, it's not going to hurt anyone. We don't have, have any um, special attachment points to desk for them. It's simply set, gravity holds them right in place. Uh, if it does fall over, it's not going to hurt any child there because as, as I mentioned, they're so lightweight. And they're easy to wipe down. You simply just square your cloth, you can wipe down the inside, wipe down the outside, sanitize and ready to go uh, for the next student there. Uh, we're also going to be providing teachers with tubs and not with teachers, but bus drivers as well with tubs of disinfectant there. Uh, our disinfectant wipes, there'll be tubs of like five hundred nice sized tubs. And it'll be using the same quaternary-based uh, disinfectant. We put our own disinfectant in there uh, for these. So we're not going to get any cross-contamination or chemical interactions going on because it's all going to be the same product being used throughout our buildings. Next slide, please. Also, we're going to make sure that we are communicating properly um, to our teachers, to community people who may be coming in and, and of course to our students as well, that we're building that culture of protecting our schools or protecting ourselves from this covid. And that's just an ongoing education process, making sure everybody is staying vigilant and aware at all times. What's the best way you can do that? Of course, with different types of signage that you can put out there. So we're going to make signage and of course we have um, our print shop working with that. So Kelly Gore, Marty Woods, um, Matt Hauser, they're doing a great job and helping us with producing in large numbers these types of uh, signage to put out there. What types of signs you may ask? Um, physical distancing, remember to stay three or six feet apart depending on where you may be. Um, directional floor arrows to help set up traffic patterns uh, through cafeterias or libraries or different areas uh, that people or office space where people may go in, that will help them maintain this physical distancing. Um, signs to help our students remember hand washing, hands uh, to, to do that. And that'll be part of an ongoing push when students return uh, to have set times where they may wash their hands within that school. So administrators can set up those schedules there. Also signage to set up for entry requirements. So if you're going to come into our building and you have an appointment, you just can't walk in because you have an appointment, you're going to have to meet certain requirements. So we need to make sure that we're educating the public about what we expect as well by putting that sign out front to let them know, here are the things that have to happen before you can come into our building. And of course, around the building, as Nurse Gill mentioned, um, posters to let people know about covid nineteen. What should I be on the lookout for in my students and adults? What are the symptoms or signs of that? And at this point, this concludes my portion of the presentation and I'm going to turn it back over now to Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Bowling. And so certainly with the information that uh, Dr. Bowling provided uh, relative to the cleaning and sanitizing uh, protocols for Hampton City Schools uh, to ensure a uh, a safe uh, workplace um, for a safe and healthy workplace for, for all staff. But also uh, measures that we have taken and that, that we, measures that we will be taking uh, for students to return uh, as, as well. Um, so ladies and gentlemen of the board, uh, this really concludes the return to school uh, presentation as it relates to um, uh, my overall recommendation uh, of a one-hundred percent uh, virtual model uh, for, for all students. And as you are aware, um, we have had very much uh, an involved uh, task force and uh, pretty good representation on our task force. Uh, we have had one-to-one meetings uh, with individuals, certainly board members. Uh, we hosted three staff webinars regarding uh, this particular recommendation. Uh, we also hosted a Facebook Live uh, session as well uh, regarding the return to school um, recommendation. And so this really concludes uh, the, the presentation. Uh, and Mr. Chairman, uh, should the board take action uh, after deliberating? Uh, I am requesting that the board approve the recommendation uh, with permission for the superintendent to make any and all uh, necessary adjustments to the academic schedule uh, and the return to school plan as deemed appropriate based on circumstances in meeting the school division's stra- uh, strategic plan and the law up to uh, the full implementation of phase three scenario two. Uh, as always, we will keep the board uh, informed. Uh, if there are questions, we're more than happy at this time, Mr. Chairman, to answer those questions.
Thank you very much, Dr. Smith. Uh, do we have any questions from our board members? Yes, Mr. Samuels.
First I have to unmute myself and well, I thank you Chairman Kilgore for the opportunity to uh, ask um, a question. So I want to go back to Kate, Ms. Maxlo. And um, during your presentation, Ms. Maxlo, you mentioned um, what is look, what does it look like to have high-quality um, teaching and learning? And, and so my question is if a student or if a teacher determined that a student is advanced or beyond what is being taught, um, how will that's teacher engage that student? So for example, my son who was in the fifth grade, he's beyond that math level. So how will that teacher engage him?
Absolutely. That's a, that's a wonderful question. Um, one thing is that teachers who um, are working at Spratley Gifted Center will be modifying a lot of the lessons in order to meet the needs of their particular students. Um, gifted resource teachers will still be working with students as well, probably utilizing that Friday in order to provide extra services. Um, but the biggest thing that we're going to be doing is also training teachers on how to differentiate um, online lessons. We didn't do that during the summer because we figured that they had enough on their plates with the five other modules that they're doing. But that is one of the first things that we're going to be doing. Um, once this, once the semester begins is having, training them on how you can um, meet students at various levels so that you are challenging the ones who need it, um, while also providing remediation for those who need that. Um, there, there are absolutely ways to do it. Um, we tried out several this past spring. Um, my department led lots of lessons for HCS employees, children, just so that we could learn the various pedagogies for doing things exactly like that.
Okay, uh, and now, and now just also another question, you mentioned um, the science. Um, so how will students be able to participate in science lab um, virtually?
That, yes. Um, so Venicia Farrell, our um, curriculum leader for science, has been working specifically on how to do um, at-home labs using various household materials. So a lot of those are going to be um, done in flex modules for K through three. And so those will be posted into Google Classroom with all of the various directions. There will be videos of teachers performing the um, the experiments and then, you know, what kids should look for, everything. Nothing's going to have to be printed. Everything could be done using um, the Google Apps. And then in fifth grade, it, it'll be very much the same except that the teacher will, you know, also be doing some of the live demonstrations and maybe even performing some of the, the experiments with the students. But again, it's going to be with things that they most likely have access to in their households.
Okay, that's, thank you so much. And I, and, and I'm not trying to manipulate or not, not meant to be uh, monopolize the question, but I have one question for um, Ms. Judge. Um, so Ms. Judge, um, in, in the normal physical classroom, um, there are times when students are, um, we have blended classroom with students with physical disabilities and so forth. So with the Zoom um capabilities, we will, will we still have the opportunity for students that have special needs? To um participate in Zoom um classrooms? So we address that social emotional um piece so they don't feel isolated. So what does that look like?
That's a very good question, Samuels. Thank you for posing it. Um absolutely. So as I was speaking earlier about the inclusive practices, we will continue those inclusive practices. And so students who have some physical limitations, no matter what their disability is, based on what their IEP says is their service um delivery model. Are their service delivery setting is the sort is the setting that they will receive those services in. So if they're in a general education classroom setting with um ten or twelve other students for that first part of the day. They will be assigned to that class and they will receive the support, the supports as identified on their IEP.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um and just real quick before I recognize any other board members, I did want to make everyone aware that uh. Uh Dr. Mason had let me know before this evening that he was not feeling well. Um but he did join us this evening and he made it almost all the way through uh Dr. Bowling's presentation part before he uh. He he put up the good fight, but he was not feeling well, so he left us uh at the very tail end of the presentation. But he he did stay through most of it, so just making everybody aware that he's left us. Do I have any other comments or questions from fellow board members? Yes, uh Ms. Banks Gray.
Yes, uh Ms. Matt Low, I do believe you did say that the um young people are required to keep their cameras on during instruction timeframes. Now, what happens within um two or three consecutive days where we do notice that a young person has not logged on? What protocol do we have set in place?
Um so when you say that they haven't logged on, um are you talking specifically when they don't have their camera on or that they just haven't come to class?
They have not come to class.
Okay, um yeah, so that's where we would be looking at reaching out to the family to find out what is happening. You know, we know that there needs to be um flexibility and grace and understanding needs to always come first, especially with everything that is going on right now. I will say the attendance procedures are still being developed specifically. Um I know that a lot of parents have asked if we can even have um some evening sessions. And we've had some teachers say that they might have some interest in doing that, especially for parents who work all day. Um we've also looked into potentially having um some of the classes recorded so that students can access them that way. But first, I think that would, it would have to start with contacting the family to see what is happening and if um other accommodations need to be made.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'll add, Ms. Banks Gray, and if we need to, uh we will also get the uh school social worker involved. Um as a collaboration or to make sure that we're we're fully collaborative in terms of our response.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions, board members? Uh yes, uh Dr. Woodhouse. And also you, Ms. Cherry, next.
Thank you so much, uh. Mister Chairman, um for Ms. Maxwell. Uh I was wondering uh how we were going to handle the student incompletes uh that have already, you know, surfaced and uh. Are are we going uh and are we going to have teacher workdays set up for the teachers? Put it on mute as you.
Yes, so we are still looking to implement the school calendar as closely as possible. Um some of the things that we may have to work out are on some of those early dismissal days, how we um. Maybe move some of, you know, if we have an AM group and a PM group, how we might move some of those schedules around. But we are, yes, we are still looking to implement teacher workdays where we have them. Um right now, Fridays would be also mostly be a lot of teacher planning and prep and grading sort of workdays. Because teachers will be teaching live lessons Monday through Thursday. Um and I'm sorry, what was the the other part of your question?
The other one was the um the student incompletes that we.
Student incompletes, yes. Um so.
I was going to handle those.
Yeah, so unlike this past spring, um we do have plans to use traditional grading methods. Um but again, we know that there might have to be some flexibility, you know, if a student gets COVID or their family gets COVID. Obviously, we have to be ready and willing to work with those students um for what they need. Um there might also be other exceptional situations, students taking care of younger brothers and sisters. Um and so that's going to be a lot of working with our teachers on the idea of um. You know, uh giving feedback to students, having assignments that are necessary. Um you know, if you don't need to give fifty math problems, don't give fifty math problems, tho- those kinds of things. And then really making use of those office hours on Fridays. So that if a stu-, because a lot of what we heard was that sometimes students didn't understand the assignments. That's why they weren't turning them in. Um and they didn't feel like they had necessarily um a way to get help on those. So really utilizing those Friday office hours so that a student can check in with the teacher. Um and also during the live Zoom meetings, we we really trying to emphasize to teachers that if you can make it a video, make it a video. And use those live lessons for the interactive piece where students ask you the questions. And you can go over their misconceptions and help clear up and help them through some of their assignments as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If I may ask one more question of uh Ms. Judge, I would like to ask her, I I I heard her mention uh service minutes. And special design instructions. And I'm wondering uh in our planning, are we planning to group our students? Depending on the service minutes that they need. I think you have a wonderful uh presentation and a wonderful. A way in which we are addressing the special needs students. Um but I'm wondering, like in group A or group B, are we grouping them according to their the uh their service minutes? That is uh demanded by the state.
Another very good question, Miss Dr. Woodhouse. Um thank you for posing that question. So when we talk about service minutes, uh more than looking at service minutes is what their deficit is or what the disability is that's imp- impeding them. Or keeping them from being able to fully access the general education curriculum. So we look at the IEP with regard to what are their areas of of need and what are their deficits? And we group students according to that. It would be the same way as the general education student. And there may be like um an assessment that we're done and we say, oh, if we do a quick check, you got it, you didn't, you got it, you didn't. And so I need to go back and work with this group who didn't get it so that I can make sure that I clear up any misconceptions before I move on to the next le- next lesson. So that's what an IEP tip does for a student. It's just like the architect's blue plans, uh blueprints. It um identifies for teachers what it is that students need in order to be successful with their educational, in their educational day.
And we're going to have plenty of time for the the teachers to do the IEPs, correct?
Absolutely, yes. We are, we are working and supporting them and making sure that that is all being done.
Okay, thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman. You're on mute, Ms. Cherry.
There you go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a couple of questions that I jotted down. And then I have a comment slash idea, if I may. The first one is for Ms. Ruth. Um Ms. Ruth, with the teachers going in to teach. Into the actual buildings three days a week. Does the teacher determine what three days those are? And if so, does Friday, which is that remediation day slash teacher meeting day, does that count as one?
Um great question, Ms. Cherry. The principals will be determining work schedules. And I'm sure that they will vary across different school buildings depending upon the needs of both the employees and the students within that building. Uh but the a- actual work schedules will be determined by um building administrators.
Okay, and the next question is also for you, Ms. Ruth. The survey from the teachers.
Yes.
We, when is that due or do we have that yet?
Uh well, there there are a couple of different surveys. The return to work. Survey that was sent out to employees last week is due tomorrow.
That, okay, that's the one I'm referring to.
Yep, and that that was sent out to all employees, not just teachers.
Okay, now on that, the question is asked whether or not I'm going to return, whether or not I'm going to retire or resign, correct?
That that question is on there, yes, ma'am.
Okay, early on, and I don't know if you've looked at the early results. Are you finding that that number is low or as expected or in line with what we've seen in the past?
Um it is, it's a very low number. Um and honestly, there are a couple of folks who we already knew were were planning to retire. Um not related to COVID. Um and then there are a couple of folks that are are new to our um resignation or retiree list.
Okay, so right now, does HR feel confident that we will be fully staffed?
I do feel confident that we will be fully staffed and will actually be making a uh presentation on staffing. Following uh my Title IX presentation.
Okay.
So I have more information for you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
And the other question was for Dr. Bowlin. Dr. Bowlin, I know part of your presentation was pretty much like Ms. Gill's in terms of. What things would look like as we slowly bring students back? And you talked about the cleaning services and the disinfectant pieces. And you talked about one that could clean a gym, for instance, in thirty minutes. How long then would it take for the cleaning to take place in a high school during class change?
Well, that would all depend on uh, Ms. Cherry, how, what you were looking for. So if you're looking at uh sanitizing desktops quickly, that's going to have to be done with the teacher's help to do. Hundreds of classrooms that you may find at at a high school level or, you know, a fifty or sixty classrooms at a middle school. There's just no way to be able to get around that quickly for uh two or three custodians to do. Um there's, we will be able to do touch points. Uh we might be able to go up and down hallways with the electrostatics uh during that time. But we have to be careful when we're using those atomizers and those electrostatic devices. They're really primarily made to be used uh after hours. Uh because it's putting that uh chemical into the air. And we have to be very careful for asthmatic or sensitive students or other uh adults that they're not breathing this in. Because although it's EPA approved uh for sanitizing, uh it can cause respiratory problems if you start inhaling. A quite a bit of it, the way it, way these devices atomize it, put it to the air in a real fine mist.
Okay, so if I'm a high school teacher, then pretty much I will be cleaning the rooms between classes?
The desktops, right, when.
The desktops and the desk shields that my students will have also touched.
Yes, uh we we could maybe have the students help with that as well, uh with gloves. They can help, you know, wipe them down and and set those aside. Um but again, it's ju- it's just volume and numbers uh versus uh maybe we have four uh custodians at a high school. And you've got a thousand kids and all these adults and all the classrooms. It's just, it's too much space to do in five or ten minute class change.
Yeah, I was just thinking from a strategic standpoint, that's going to be pretty quick because class changes.
Yeah, exactly.
Quick and um then the teachers got to do it and and do the shields and the students in the hallway waiting. So I know that's something we can flesh out, but I want at least, you know, put that on the radar as well.
Yes, absolutely. We'll work on that, continue to work on that process.
Thank you, yes. And my last piece, Mr. Chairman, is really the um my comment slash idea. I think Dr. Smith, in fact, I don't think Dr. Smith, I know that you and your your team have done an exceptional job. And this was not an easy task, that this involved a lot of moving parts. And Dr. Smith, we know with your leadership that you were one who crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is. But I also understand that regardless of what the recommendation, it's not going to be perfect for everyone. And um as long as we keep our eye on what I think is key and what this board thinks is key. And what obviously this administration thinks is key, which is safety, then I think we're on the right side of right.
Absolutely.
So I do think this this plan from that perspective makes sense. The only thing that I would ask would be this. I know that unless we have a vaccine or this disease miraculously disappears. That quite honestly, November two, which will be the end of the nine weeks. It probably won't look much different from a community standpoint than June two.
Right.
Because nothing will have changed. But at the same time, I'm thinking, once we go through this, is it possible? For us to help our parents out as much as we can with having something like a repository of resources? A place where parents can go to or look up, pretty much like the FAQs we have.
Absolutely.
For instance, you know, we always say you don't know what you don't know, but for parents who may have to go to work. Physically, who cannot stay at home. If you have a parent who's a first responder, they can't work from home. Or a single parent who has to put food on the table, so he or she has to go to work. Sometimes there may be questions or what do I do in case this happens? What happens if I myself, as mom, I feel, I feel badly and I don't know if I'm coming down with COVID, but I have no insurance? Is there someplace that does the testing free or what do I do if Johnny doesn't log on for three days? Where's the help? If we can just come up with a repository of resources for parents, you know, what about childcare? Someone asked me the other day and I just don't know. They said, will the retired teachers of Hampton be available for tutoring? Great idea, but I have no clue. So I'm thinking if if parents who, it's not our responsibility, but I think we owe it to our community. And our immediate community to try to help them as much as we can, if we can do the that. And this board has a lot of expertise already. You look at Tina Banks Gray, who has for years served our. Families and our children, who knows the resources. You've got um Ms. Afanjah, who from a social services standpoint. Has done years of work with that. Dr. Mason with the social emotional, Mrs. Samuels with the after school program. Doctor, Dr. Woodhouse with the faith-based community. If there's someone, we could pull those together and have one place parents can go. And and just say, if this happens, what do I do? Who do I go to? Wh- what are my options? I think that would be helpful. What about you?
Excellent, Reece, um excellent suggestion there and we'll begin working in that direction. I think absolutely we can accomplish that as a team. And so um we'll begin to work on that, uh if not later this week, beginning of next week, we'll move on.
Thank you so much.
Excellent suggestion. Thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cherry. Uh any other comments, repeats, go backs? All right, well, I do want to thank uh Ms. Maxwell uh a tremendous amount of uh detail. And uh really, one of the things that caught my eye was the the bank of online lessons. I'm really excited about that. And to encourage folks that haven't gone to the website, there is a lot of information. And and granted, because there is so much information and so much detail, it's not necessarily, you know, easy to navigate. Um so I I agree with Ms. Cherry, um some easy resources. I know at the Facebook Live uh event, uh Dr. Cagiano mentioned the Chromebook Zone. Uh which has got a lot of good stuff as people may not be familiar with Chromebooks right now. And they're especially in our pre-K uh through fourth grade. Um and then Ms. Judge, uh great presentation, lots of details. I I had commented to Dr. Smith earlier about just the, when you really put it all together, it's such a team effort. When you go from the coordinators, the teachers, the the assistants, the therapists, the pathologists, the interpreters. I mean, it's just a, it's a big team depending upon the specific needs of the student. Um there's a lot of people involved that are, that want to help. And I did see an earlier version of your presentation that had a quote from John Lewis at the end. I thought that was awesome. Um so thank you for that. Um Ms. Ruth, again, uh thank you for your information. And I definitely uh, I am definitely interested in seeing how the survey results come out um for the staff. Uh so excited about that. Ms. Forrest, haven't seen you in a while, but thank you very much uh for your information. You guys have been doing a great job since this all started and amazing job through the summer. And I know you're prepared for whatever direction this takes, so thank you and thank all the folks in food and nutrition. Um Ms. Gill, again, I got to hear this version at the Facebook Live, but uh it's it's always good to hear. it's, it's always good to hear it again. I think you've probably got some really tough challenges because the protocols, once somebody gets identified are one route, but then how you bring them back and what you do, there's so much coordination between your efforts and what Dr. Bowling's doing, so um, it's, it's gonna be uh, quite the task when we finally do get back into the buildings. And then Dr. Bowling, um, again, always good to hear your stuff. I know that I saw, I think it was a YouTube video that Dr. Smith did with Ms. Goral and it had a couple of pictures of the classrooms. And so you could see the dividers and and um, very, very nice looking and appropriately spaced, so I think, you know, as we go forward, if we're in a position to where maybe we can go back, I think we're, we're about as ready as you can be. Um, I think everybody's done an amazing job thinking through the what-if details and making adjustments. Um, I know the, the information on the website has been a constant work in progress and when we we make adjustments, we adjust the website, so again, just thank you to everybody for all the work that has gone into this and uh, and thank you, Dr. Smith, for your leadership and all the task teams' efforts to get us to this point to where we are uh, potentially going to further deliberate and possibly take action on your recommendation later this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and again, uh, as you have already expressed to all of the members of the team, thank you so very much for uh, an outstanding job and uh, sharing uh, of your content and and expertise as well. So thank you so very much. Uh, Mr. Chairman, if things are in order, we'll move to Title IX update.
Yes, sir.
Unless there are the questions, uh, and I think Ms. Robin Ruth, our Executive Director for Human Resources, will take the lead uh, with the Title IX uh, presentation. Thank you.
Yes, hold on one, one moment and I am going to share my screen. While I am sharing my screen, I would suggest that everybody take a couple of deep breaths. We have we have heard a lot of very important information tonight and um, the topic I'm about to share with you is um, also pretty, pretty intense, hopefully. When I asked Dr. Smith back in May if I could do the presentation on August fifth, I had no idea that we would also be sharing our, our re-entry plan, so again, take a deep breath. Um, and, and I hope that you will find this, this presentation very informative. Um, there has been a lot of discussion about the new Title IX regulations that the Department of Education really released in May of twenty twenty and that become effective on August fourteenth of twenty twenty, so next week, um, I believe next Friday, they will be effective. Um, so I'm here today to provide you with some background about the changes that will hopefully provide some context for the revised discriminatory harassment policy that I will be sharing with you later this evening. Um, before we get into the changes, I, I thought it would be uh, important to share a brief history of Title IX. Um, as everyone is, I am sure is aware, uh, Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four um, implemented what we think of as the traditional um, civil rights legislation around um, non-discrimination based on someone's race, color, religion, sex or national origin. Um, and over the years, so we have added, added to that list. It was actually in nineteen seventy-two that the Title IX um, legislation was passed. It was signed into law by President Nixon. Um, and that was specific to uh, schools that receive public funding. And it was in nineteen seventy-five that oversight for Title IX moved into the Department of Health, Education and Welfare, um, which is now the Department of Education. On your screen, you see the thirty-seven words that encompass the entirety of Title IX. No person in the United States shall, on the basis of sex, be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination under any educational program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. Like I said, thirty-seven short words make up Title IX. Um, and the interpretations of these thirty-seven words have grown and contracted depending upon who is in the White House. Um, and when it was initially implemented back in nineteen seventy-two, uh, it was passed in order to address inequities in college admissions. Um, not even so much a focus on K-12, but specifically college admissions. Um, in the late seventies, the focus shifted to athletics. And then um, it wasn't until some point in the eighties when the um, sexual harassment and sexual discrimination um, began to be a focus of Title IX. So I've listed up here, um, when, when we talk about sex-based discrimination versus sex-based harassment and I will go into more details particularly on the sex-based harassment. You know, what does that mean? When we talk about sex-based discrimination, we're talking about program equity. Uh, are there any barriers that would prevent, um, you know, girl, girls participating in a program versus boys? Um, recruitment and admissions access in terms of programs. You, do we have more girls that are admitted into our gifted program than boys? Um, pregnancy is covered under Title IX, obviously athletics. Um, but it also impacts employees. It's not just about students. It impacts employment um, and our hiring activities, um, also extracurricular activities, um, salaries and benefits, et cetera. Um, and then on the sex-based harassment side, and that's where we're going to concentrate tonight. Because honestly, um, there were two thousand, over two thousand pages in the revised regulations that came out in May. And the entire focus of the revised regulations is specifically on sex-based harassment. So there are no changes whatsoever in the regs when it comes to program equity, when it comes to athletics. All of the rules that we've been following for a number of years continue to be the rules that we follow. Um, where you will see the difference is, is on the sex-based harassment. When we talk about our Title IX obligations as a school division, um, and kind of have them, overall, we want to make sure that we remedy um, any sort of violations that may, may occur. But we start with that investigation and we make sure that we put a stop to whatever the immediate allegation is and we put measures in place to prevent that moving forward. And again, we want to look at remedying that situation, not only for, for the um, the individuals or the parties that are involved in the allegation, but also for the community as a whole. Um, equity is really at the heart of Title IX, so I wanted to just spend a couple of slides talking about equity. Um, you, we, we throw that word around a lot uh, these days, but that really is the heart of Title IX, making sure that there is an equitable learning and working environment for all of our students and families. And hopefully you will see that um, equity is at the center of the revisions to the policy that we're talking about later on. Um, I'm sure many of you have seen the graphic that shows three young people standing behind a fence, um, trying to watch a baseball game and um, and using that as a description for equality versus equity. I really like this graphic a little bit better because it, it removes the barriers from the graphic. You, you, you still have that fence in that other graphic. There's still a barrier there and so it is our job to, to try to remove the barriers to equity for all of our students and all of our employees. And it is our goal to support all of the parties, not, not just the, the person who files the complaint, but also the respondent. And so that's, that's a whole part of that equity piece, making sure that everyone is treated with dignity. Um, what I've got here on this table hopefully distills the mandates behind Title IX. Um, there are really three main focus areas. First, as I said, was the investigation and we want to ensure that the investigation is thorough, reliable and impartial. There is a, a significant focus in the new regulations on ensuring impartiality when it comes to investigations. Uh, in terms of the process, we want to make sure that it is prompt. And you will see some new definitions in the policy around what prompt uh, looks like under the new regulations. We also want to make sure that the process is effective and again, that it is an equitable process for all parties. And finally, again, we want to make sure that we have remedies that end the discrimination or the harassment that prevent its recurrence and also remedy the effects upon the victim and the community. Um, to me, this is a, a helpful diagram, um, that really helps to distill, like I said, two thousand plus pages of regulations. Um, in terms of the significant changes to the regulations, these bullets represent the most significant changes to K-12 when it comes to Title IX. If we were uh, a, a higher education institution, this slide would be much longer. In fact, it would be two or three slides because they, um, they have um, many more changes than we do at the K-12 level. That is not to say, however, that the the changes to the regulations are not significant and will not um, create additional work and require additional resources at the K-12 level because they absolutely do. Um, the first one is uh, the timelines are expanded to ensure greater due process and I'm gonna go into all these in more detail. Um, but the resolution process can take upwards of sixty days. Whereas in a K-12 setting, we're used to resolving some issues within a matter of two or three days. It may take up to sixty days to resolve Title IX issues moving forward. Um, also, all employees are now considered mandated reporters. This is very similar to Child Protective Services for, as long as I can remember, um, all Hampton City Schools employees or all public education employees for that matter have been mandated reporters when it comes to any CPS-related incident. And that same now holds true for Title IX. So we will be providing training for our employees um, later this summer, um, to talk about that fact that we are all now mandated reporters. This next bullet uh, will have a huge impact on how we conduct investigations here in, in Hampton and in all K-12 school divisions. The same individual can, cannot have multiple roles in the investigative process moving forward. The reason this has been put in place is to assure freedom from bias and I, like I said, I will go into, to more detail about what that means, but it does greatly expand the team of folks that will be working on Title IX issues. We also have increased training retirements, whoops, requirements, which is one of the reasons I'm providing you all with this update this evening. Um, I'll go into more specifics about that. And the definition of sexual harassment has changed. It has narrowed greatly. Um, which on the one hand means that we may actually see fewer true Title IX cases. Um, and, but like I said, we'll take a look at that in a few slides. So first off, who is on the Title IX team? I mentioned that the team has expanded. Uh, every school division is required to have a Title IX coordinator. Because we are a larger school division, we will also have deputy coordinators. Uh, we will have people who conduct investigations. And if, if I conduct an, an investigation on a particular allegation, that means that's the only role I can play. I cannot be a decision maker. Um, so we've got, we will have decision makers and those will be both in initial level decision makers who determine whether or not there's a, uh, been a policy violation. There will also be appellate decision makers who will review the, the case if one or both of the parties chooses to file an appeal. And then we also will have informal resolution facilitators. And like I said, all of those people within one Title IX case have to be different. They, the, um, if last year, if there was a Title IX allegation, the principal might receive the allegation and the AP might, might do the investigation. And then the, the principal would make the decision as to whether or not there was a policy violation. If the principal hears or receives that allegation, they have just taken themselves out of the role of decision maker. So in order to address that, we're actually going to create pools within Hampton City Schools. I, or the Executive Director of Human Resources, me currently, have been identified as the Title IX coordinator. And so it is my job to um, ensure that all of the boxes get ticked off during an investigation. And I'll go into a little bit more detail about that. We also have deputy coordinators. Um, those deputy coordinators include the Executive Director of Student Support Services, the second, uh, Senior Directors of Secondary, of School Leadership, both at elementary and secondary level. The Director of Special Education, the Director of Student Services and the Coordinator of Athletics. They have all been identified as deputy coordinators. And if there is ever an instance where I'm not able to, to fill the role of Title IX coordinator either because I might be on vacation, or it could be that the person making the allegation is my next door neighbor. Um, for any reason, they would be able to step in and serve in that role. Um, we are in the process of training all of our building administrators to be investigators. We are utilizing uh, training through a TICSA, that's the Association of Title IX uh, Title IX Administrators and they have been a huge help in terms of developing the training and also uh, we're utilizing them for the policy that you will see in a bit. Um, so again, all of our administrator, building level administrators will be trained to be investigators. They will also all be receiving training to be decision makers along with deputy coordinators. Um, and they will also receive training on informal resolution along with our coun- school counselors. They will receive um, specific training on the informal resolution process. Um, so in terms of what the Title IX Coordinator does specifically, um, in this position, and there are many school divisions that are going to uh, implement a model where the Title IX coordinator does nothing but coordinate Title IX and/or other equity issues. Um, we have not reached that point yet, but depending upon how this year goes, there may be a recommendation. We'll see. But um, as the Title IX Coordinator, um, it needs to be somebody who has autonomy and independence um, and reports to the superintendent and they must be able to affect change across many departments. Fortunately, in my role, I, I can check all of those boxes. Um, and as I said, we will have deputy coordinators. Um, I have district-wide oversight and assurance of compliance as the Title IX Coordinator. And it is within that role that it's my job to prevent and remediate all sex-based, sex or gender-based discrimination and harassment. I am the primary contact from government entities if there is a complaint. And employees can comply, uh, file a complaint. And employees can comply uh, file a complaint either with the EEOC or with OCR. And for students and parents, OCR would be the avenue that they would take for filing complaints and. The expectation from both of those governmental agencies is that. I am the person that they can can pick up the phone and call and I should know the answers. To any investigation that's going off, going on in the school division. Um, I'm the point person for reports as they are required. Um, I'm the creator and implementer of appropriate policies. As you will see a little bit later this evening, and I also have training oversight. For for the entire division. Um, and then also, and these are all old rules. Um, a lot of the ones that I just mentioned are are new to the regulations. Uh, but still take, you know, have athletics and gender equity as an issue. Uh, oversight of the grievance process. And uh, in terms of compliance with the final sanctions that will fall under the Title IX Coordinator. And record keeping, there are some new record keeping requirements. We are now required to keep. All Title IX related records for seven years. That there was no. Um, specified um. Retention period in the past, but we now have to keep them for a minimum of seven years. Next slide. In terms of the Title IX team. Um, the deputy coordinators and school based administrators, these are some changes that are specific to the new regulations. In the past, the only. Person who's been identified on the website is a Title IX Coordinator with specific contact information. We are now required to. Include in all of our publications and on our website, the contact information for all deputy coordinators. And for school based administrators. Um, also, as I mentioned earlier, the uh, deputy coordinators may lead the Title IX based. Process. Sometimes they may also serve as investigators, decision makers. And facilitate informal resolution. Never all at once, but they can play any one of those roles in any investigation. In terms of the role of the investigator, and this has changed. In in the past, when an AP or a principal would conduct an investigation. Not only would they conduct that investigation, but they might make recommendations in terms of sanctions or consequences. For the student or the employee. That is no longer the case. Um, they are own the, the role of the investigator is. To um, to interview. Basically, it's kind of the the gas model. They are to gather information through interviews with parties and witnesses. They are to organize and compile and analyze that relevant information. And then they are to summarize that. And then they will will take that report. And they will share it with the decision maker. And it is the decision maker. Who will then determine whether or not school division policy has been violated. That is no longer the role of the investigator, which was often the case in the past. And. A very large focus of the new regulations is on ensuring. That bias is removed from the process, and that's one of the reasons for splitting out the roles. Um, and it will be this decision maker who determines. Like I said, whether or not there have been any policy violations. And then also what appropriate sanctions or discipline will be if there are policy violations. And they will also draft the written determination. Um, for the rat- that outlines the rationale for the findings. And another significant difference is that. That written investigation will go to both parties. Both the person who filed the complaint. And uh, the respondent or the person that the complaint was made against. And that is true of the investigative report as well. Never. At least in Hampton City Schools, have we really shared the investigative report with. Um, the the parties, but that is something that we are required to do moving forward. If there is an appeal and both parties involved have the ability to make an appeal. Uh, we will use an appellate decision maker. And again, this is somebody who has not been involved. At all in any of the process. They will review the written submissions from the parties and they will um. Make a determination as to whether or not. The the case can be appealed. And really, there there are only a couple of factors that that could can be appealed if. Either one of the parties indicates that there was bias somewhere in the process. So for instance, if they say that the investigator was biased because. They are a cousin to. The 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 complainant or the person who filed the com- the complaint. That would be grounds for appeal. If there is new evidence that was not available at the time the initial investigation was done, that would be a case for. Um, an appeal. And they. Can. Um, if if there's a decision to appeal, they can ask for another investigation. Um, and again, they will have to write a written uh, report that outlines the rationale for the outcome of the appeal. There is only one level of appeal. And so there is that limiting factor. In terms of training, there are robust training uh, mandates within the new Title IX regulations. So. A hundred percent of our employees will receive. Um, some some basic. Training on Title IX and also the role of the mandated reporter. And this will be um. Uh, online training, so there won't be classes. It will be online training. Uh, similar to the Safe Schools training that we use already with all of our employees. So that will be an added component. Uh, for. Anyone who serves as a coordinator, investigator, a decision maker, an appeals officer, or the informal resolution facilitators. Uh, they will receive training. And some of the things that specifically the training will include, uh, we're looking at conflicts of interest and bias. Uh, the definition of sexual harassment, which has changed greatly. Uh, also investigative procedures, the credibility, uh, taking a look at evidence and and whether or not evidence is creditable. Uh, there will also be training on report and rationale writing. Uh, and how to manage the the. The process in terms of question, you know, the questioning process, what appeals might look like, what informal. Resolution might loo- look like. And. Again, in terms of promoting impartiality, there will be training on sex stereotypes. Another key change is that all of these training materials must be maintained for seven years and will be posted on our website. And again, that is so um, to help ensure. Freedom from bias in the training materials that we use. So those will, you will be seeing those on or around August fourteenth on our website. As I indicated, the sec- the definition for sexual harassment has been redefined. And what you will find in the regulations is a very. Legalistic. Set of definitions. These are all taken straight out of code. Uh, this is code that has applied to. Secondary or not secondary, but um, higher education for years. Very legalistic and. Will be different for. K twelve to get used to. One of the biggest differences. Is that in the past. Um, you'll note on here, it's uh, that second bullet says that it's unwelcome conduct determined by a reasonable person to be so severe pervasive. And objectively offensive that it effectively denies equal access to the recipient's education program or activity. I mentioned earlier that the new definition will narrow. What we have to view as true sexual harassment. In the, with the old regs. What we looked at was whether or not. The harassment or the discrimination was or harassment was severe. Whether it was pervasive. And whether it was subject, objectively offensive. So it had to fall into to one of those three buckets, if you will. Based on the new regulations. It must, the the harassment must meet all three of those requirements. It must be severe. It must be pervasive and it must be objectively offensive in order to be called sexual harassment. Per the Title IX division description or definition. Um, there are also very specific. Definitions around sexual assault, dating violence, domestic violence and stalking. Again, um, those will be covered in detail in the policy and I'll be going through those with you a little bit later. In terms of next steps, um, we have revised the school board policies for both students and employees. And what you will see later on this evening is we are recommending a mirror policy are. Uh, they are currently not mirror policies around Title IX for students and employees, but you will see the recommendation for a. A mirror policy with uh, students and employees. We'll also be introducing two new resolution processes. It's a formal resolution process and an informal resolution process. These will, these two processes will replace the current investigative process that we use. As I have indicated, we are um, doing extensive training, particularly with our school based administrators. And a number of us, I think there are at least ten of us who earlier this summer went through an extensive um. Title IX administrative administrator course. And uh, all building based administrators are going through a two day investigator training. And then. Uh, later in this fall, probably in late August, early September, so it's technically not fall, but late. Uh, once school is up and running, we will be doing decision making training. Or decision maker training for all building administrators. Um, and as I indicated, there'll be mandated uh, reporter training for all employees. We are going to be implementing a case management database. Super excited about this. Uh, case management database will be using it not only for Title IX issues, but we'll be able to use it for other. Uh, student code of conduct issues for other vi- uh, violations. Under the discriminatory harassment and retaliation policy. We are even going to begin using it for COVID tracking, for family medical leave tracking. So super excited about the new case management database and we'll have more information about that. As we get further along in the implementation process. And again, there will be extensive updates to the HCS website. To make sure that the information is easily and readily available for. Um, all employees, for students and for parents, since you know, the vast majority of our students are minors. And parents will in all likelihood have a a greater role than they might have at the higher ed level. So. After all that, what kind of questions have I generated in your minds?
Thank you very much, Ms. Ruth. Um, so do we have any questions, comments from board members? And I can't see everybody's face right now. So you may have to come off mute and speak up. Here we go. There we go. Anybody have a question or comment?
Now, Ms. Ruth, I do have a question. Now, you did um. Go into details about the training that the building and that um, administrators will need as investigators and decision makers. Does that actually require um, some type of certification when it comes to Title IX?
Title IX does not require certifications. However, we, the, I think it was a four day course that we participated in over the summer. Was actually a certify, a certification program. So there are several of us that are now certified Title IX administrators. And the investigative training is also a certification program. Again, the certifications are not required, but. The the depth and breadth of the training that Attixa is providing. I. Our students and employees deserve that level of of training and that level for. The administrative team here in Hampton to have that level of knowledge.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other questions from board members? Ms. Ruth, I'd just like to say, uh, when you start a presentation with this is pretty intense and take a deep breath. Not disappoint. Especially the the comment about the fact that um. Folks involved uh, in the investigation cannot have multiple roles, but yet the requirement is to be impartial. That that creates a very challenging. Uh, process, to say the least. So anyway, thank you very much for uh, the presentation.
Thank you.
Dr. Smith?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. If I'm in order, we'll move to the staffing update. Ms. Ruth will continue.
All right.
Sorry about that. I muted myself. Yes, um. Ms. Cherry, thank you for your question from earlier and. You know, I always get inside, excited in August when I'm able to come to you with our staffing updates. As with everything else, staffing for this year is. Is more challenging. There are more pieces to the puzzle this year than normal. But I am super excited to let you know that we are currently ninety eight percent staffed. We have twenty nine vacancies as of this afternoon. And you had asked a question about whether or not I anticipated we would be fully staffed. We are probably going to get creative in some of our staffing, uh, particularly for the first nine weeks. Um, but I I have no doubt that we will be fully staffed. By the time that students return to the classroom. Um, we do have um. There there are a few positions we won't have filled intentionally right on September eighth because. We had, we have other employees who may end up being in alternate assignments. And so. I, what I can tell you is that on September eighth, every student will have. Highly qualified, fully qualified teachers in front of them. What I can't tell you is that their teacher may or may not change by the time the second nine week starts. Again, we just, we have to be a little more creative this year than than we would in normal circumstances. And I'm sure you won't, you all will not be surprised to hear that some of those uh, openings. Uh, we're still looking for CTE teachers, particularly as it relates to the academies. Um, math, elementary and special education. Are the, where we have our openings.
Great.
Great. Any comments, questions from board members? Yes, Mr. Samuels.
I had to unmute myself. Uh, quick question, Ms. Ruth, um, in regards to this. Um, so I know um, over the course of the summer, teacher, teachers were required to participate in that virtual learning. Um, training as Ms. Maxalo alluded to. So if we are hiring or have not hired for certain. Uh, areas. So when we do hire for those areas come when it's needed. What is the process for those teachers that are coming or being on boarded to to receive those, the virtual training that is needed?
Ms. Ruth, would you like me to take that one?
You can.
Okay, um, regarding the technology trainings that we were discussing um, during new teacher induction. Um, that the week that we do that, we do have um. We do have some time in order to go over those things with them, but also we actually, all of this training is self paced. Um, and it's not due till August thirty first. We posted it all in the school Google classrooms and our digital learning specialists are supporting. All of the teachers, even as they they come on board with completing all of those, so they can complete. Complete them whenever they want, as long as it's done by August thirty first. Um, and even after that time, they will stay in those Google classrooms. So even if we have teacher. So even if we have teachers hired after that, they will still have access to all of that training.
Yes. And in addition to that, Mr. Samuels, there are some positions where we will not hire a a new teacher. Until the students return to the classroom. And so again, there'd be some some different training that would would go on there.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members, comments? All right. Dr. Smith, I believe.
Chairman, that concludes the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now move on to the hearing of any delegations or presentations of any written communications or petitions. I believe we have a couple. And so what we will do this evening. Ms. Bowers, if I could ask you to read the protocols first and then do we have someone who's tied into the Zoom who's going to join us? Okay, so if you can read the protocols first and then.
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues. Speakers comment on individuals at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and are defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the school board, the superintendent nor the school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers about individuals. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration. Is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input. And Mr. Chairman, our first speaker is Ms. Sharma and she is here on Zoom, so.
Good evening.
Everybody, I'm Dr. Sharma. I'm a professor at Hampton University. And a bio microbiologist by training and I have a sixth grader who will be starting in fall in Stradly. One of my concern as a parent is about the textbooks and the access to the textbooks. And last year I requested the textbooks in the from the school, I did cut some partial books, but I was all directed towards the online resources. And I was a little bit disappointed with that, but I'm like, I'm gonna try, gonna be proactive this year and I'm gonna. Request the textbooks as early as I can. Now I'm gonna put on my educator hat as a as I teach in the higher education arena. Is. We always enforce reading and comprehension, but if our students, they are not learning. Or reading and comprehending from the textbooks and just depending on the PowerPoint or short notes from the teachers, it's really not teaching. So I would like the board to address my issue.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Sharma. Appreciate your comments this evening. All right, Ms. Bowers, do we? I think we had two written.
Yeah. The first one is from Brenda Marks residing at 54 Marina Road in Hampton. And she's written Chairman Kilgore and members of the board. I address you today to implore you to amend the superintendent's recommendation of all virtual learning to virtual learning for four four through 12. With an AB hybrid option for K three and special needs children. This is the only way every child will be served by the division. In support of this request, I represent the following. Number one, as parents, we were advised that a great deal of thought went into the original four plans. And that whatever phase the state was in, the school would reopen in that phase. Only after the surveys had closed did Dr. Smith retreat to an all virtual learning setting. Okay, she jumps to number three. Virginia is in phase three, not phase one. Number four, we have a governor who is a medical doctor with pediatric specialty. He says at phase three. Schools can open. Granted, he has passed the liability book to local divisions, but there's nothing in the state plans that prohibit schools from opening now. Number five, the benchmark for fully opening up the state was a 10% positivity rate. And Hampton, with the exception of two days, has been consistently below that mark. Number six. I can take my child to the beach, the store and even social gatherings. And now Bush Gardens is opening, but I cannot send my child to school. Number seven, this is a fear driven decision. I think every one of us is fully aware that when school reopens and it has to reopen. There will be students that get sick and there will be staff that gets sick. That is a sad statement, but it is true. Why are we better to go to no? Go to November, the middle of flu season to now. My child is not a virtual learner and there's nothing you can say or do that is going to change that. My child is entitled to an education provided by the locality where we reside. From the comments on the live session on Monday, I'm not the only person who feels this way. We need to provide educational access to all of the student body, not just those who easily learn. We need to consider the children whose only safe place is school and the disparity in the social. Ex- ex- cons of all the children who attend Hampton City Schools. In closing, again, I implore you to amend the superintendent's recommendation to include a hybrid. In person option for K three and special ed students. Your failure to do so makes your motto a fraud because you will only be servicing those who learn easily. Thank you.
Ms. Bowers, what was the the name again, please?
Brenda Marks.
Okay, thank you.
And the next one is from Deborah Apperson, who resides at 411 Dunham Massey Drive. Please consider overriding Dr. Smith's proposal 100% virtual learning. With an option for limited in person learning for students K through 12 with an IEP. For those special needs students whose disabilities limit success with virtual learning. They are unable to access a free and appropriate education. Many have already experienced learning loss from spring 2019. I think she means spring 2020. Another quarter of virtual learning will put them even further behind the curve. Students with social, emotional goals, behavior goals or functional academics, living goals will have a very difficult time achieving them in a virtual setting. My daughter does not do well with virtual learning. Her autism, ADHD and anxiety makes it prohibitive. She needs in person learning to achieve as many skills as possible to pass the SOLs. In particular, the 10th grade writing SOL. We are running out of time to make a regular diploma a reality for her. Again, please consider an in person option for students with IEPs. They too are part of every child every day and that in person option is what it takes. And that's all I have.
Mr. Kilgore, you're muted, sir.
Sorry, I thought I took myself off. Thank you, Ms. Bowers. I just wanted to say to. Dr. Sharma, if you want to stay with us, that's fine, but you need to go on mute. I think when Ms. Bowers was talking, it may have been jumping over to you occasionally, but so. When you're not talking, we all need to be on mute. Okay, so are there any other public comments, Ms. Bowers? I think you may have been on mute. Do we have any other comments, Ms. Bowers?
No, I have no more.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so now we come to the part of our meeting for deliberation. Of the return to school plan recommendation from the superintendent. I know we asked a lot of comments earlier, but do board members have any questions, comments that they want to make? About the superintendent's return to school recommendation? Yes, Ms. Cherry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say that I feel that the recommendation from the superintendent has been fully vetted, if you will. It was difficult because he and his entire team had to navigate uncharted territory. And I feel they did so with empathy. They did so with a focus on safety. And they did so with confidence. I'm very pleased with the comment.
Thank you very much. If there's no other deliberative comments, Mr. Samuels?
Yes. Allude to what Ms. Cherry shared. I this plan was vetted. Dr. Smith also included. Input from various community stakeholders and so subsequently. Mr. Kilgore, our Chairman Kilgore. I make a motion that we move this deliberation item 5.01. Return to school plan recommendation by Dr. Smith to action and make that action 5, 6.02.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Samuels and a second by Ms. Cherry. Is to move the superintendent's recommended return to school plan. From deliberation to action. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, will you call for the vote?
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse? Ms. Afonja?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye. Motion carries. It will be moved to our action item 6.02. Okay, so now moving on to action items. Our first action item 6.01 is the Virginia Public School Authority Resolution. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So.
Motion from Cherry, do I have a second?
I will second it. I'll second.
I have a motion, Ms. Cherry, and a second for Mr. Samuels to approve the Virginia Public School Authority Resolution on our agenda this evening. Is there any discussion or deliberation? If not, Ms. Bowers, will you please call for the vote?
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afonja?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye, motion passes. Next action item is action item 6.02, which is the superintendent's recommended return to school plan. Do I have a motion to approve that plan?
Mr. Kilgore, and would you like me to read the recommendation recommendation again and?
Yes, I would, especially the in comment.
Okay, absolutely. I'm requesting that the board approve the recommendation with permission for the superintendent. To make any and all necessary adjustments to the academic schedule. And the return to school plan as deemed appropriate based on circumstances and meeting the school division strategic plan and the law. Up to the full implementation of phase three scenario two. As always, I will keep the board informed.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Okay. So let's see. Have I taken a motion and gotten a second, correct?
So I make a motion that we approved it.
Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Samuels. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Banks Gray. I keep looking all around the screen here, find trying to see who's talk. Is there any discussion? I just want to say again, thank you to Dr. Smith, the entire task team. All the people involved with this, all the detail, truly amazing. And definitely shows the with all the detail that is out there now, so. All right, hearing none, no other discussion, Ms. Bowers, we call for the vote.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afonja?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Emphatically, aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye, motion passes. Thank you very much. We now move on to deliberation first read. We have five policies on first read this evening. And I will turn it over, I guess, to either Dr. Smith or or I guess Ms. Ruth is going to start us out.
Yes, Ms. Ruth.
Thank you very much. As I shared during the presentation, we are introducing the revision to. Both GBAB, which is our current discriminatory harassment and retaliation policy. And GHGB, which is our current student sexual harassment policy. So while they are listed as two separate items on the first read agenda. I as I go through the policy, please know that everything applies to both GBAB and GHGB. I I will not go through all 25 ish pages of the policy twice. You will also notice in in addition to the length and the fact that we are creating mirror policies. That the current policy is considered or the the revised policy is considerably longer than the current policy. And that's intentional. The goals behind these recommendations are to provide one policy that addresses all civil rights related issues. And to ensure all of the information that all parties involved in an allegation need to that any information that they need to know. They can find in one place. Part of our discussion at one point in time had been to have a a short policy and then to have a bunch of different places that. Either students or parents or employees could go to find, say, definitions or. Different components of the process and we decided from it. You know, looking at it from an equity perspective, if you've got someone who has limited computer skills. It just didn't seem fair. So we've got it all in in one place at one time. Before I go into the details on the policy, I would like to take a moment to thank the folks who helped to craft this policy. It was not an easy process. And so specifically, I'd like to to thank Trina Hatcher, Tiffany Hardy, Jeff Blow, Eric Stone, Kim Judge, and especially Nancy Reeves. She and I spent many, many hours lugging through this policy. So thank you to all of them. Also had several members of the policy committee who stepped up to provide. Feedback on the policy, including Jessica White, Karen Johnson and Catherine Thurston. So thanks to everybody who who helped to pull this policy together. Again, this is a 20 plus page policy, so I'm not going to review all of it. I'm going to focus on the components of the policy that are new. Because there are many components of the policy that are the same. So as I go through, that will be my focus. First, under the rationale for the policy, which is number one. This policy and the associated policies will take precedence over disciplinary proceedings. Such that consequences may not be assigned until the conclusion of the entire Title IX process to include all appeals. This is going to be a significant mind shift for all administrators. Again, I had made reference during the presentation that you know, sometimes we would wrap up a Title IX investigation. Maybe in a couple. maybe in a couple of days, maybe in a couple of weeks, and and then sanctions were put in place as necessary. This new process uh we're anticipating could take forty-five to sixty days. And that means and potentially longer if there's an appeal. And so that means that any sanctions that might be a part of a recommendation will not be put in place until the the entire process is complete. So that will be a big mind shift um for folks. When we look at Section Two, it is a two-and-a-half-page list of definitions. Um we felt it was very important to include those definitions within the the policy because the the language has become so legalistic. And so Section Two, which is about two-and-a-half pages long, um includes definitions of hopefully everything everybody will need to know in order to read it and understand this policy. Um moving on to Section Three, the applicable scope, again, um we anticipate that the the investigative process or the or the the resolution process will take forty-five to sixty days and potentially longer for uh very egregious or serious allegations. Um nothing has really changed around the the Title IX Coordinator. Moving on to Section Five, in terms of independence and conflict of interest, again, as I had shared during the presentation, there is a significant focus within the regulations on ensuring that there is no bias within the process. And so we have added a a lengthy section on um what independence means, what conflict of interest might look like, and what we will do, what um anybody who's reading the policy should do if they feel that there is a conflict of interest. I had also mentioned during the presentation that um I'm moving on to Section Six um that we are required to um provide contact information for deputy coordinators. Um so that needs to be easily accessible. So we've included a whole lot more contact information in this policy than we have included in the past. I did want to point out one, um I think this is towards the end of Section Six, where uh we talk about officials with authority and we are identifying all building administrators as officials with authority. So um they are also able to receive reports on Title IX violations. Um moving on to Section Seven, uh in terms of notice of complaints of discrimination, harassment, and/or retaliation, a lot of this remains the same. We have always accepted written uh or verbal notice. In order for someone to make a formal complaint, moving forward, the the complaint must be in writing. Uh we can no longer just accept a verbal report and have that be considered a a formal report, so it will need to be in in writing. Uh we can, we will continue to use the Safe Schools Hotline. And as I had mentioned, we will be implementing a case management software program. Um and the link for that program will be added as as soon as we have that link and it is active, but um so other than that, that remains the same. The section on supportive measures is is new. There is within the the regulations an emphasis on putting supportive measures into place for both complainants and respondents. And so we have uh spent some particular time indicating what some of those supportive measures might be. It is important to note that anything that we use as a supportive measure, that it that is exclusively what we can use it for. We cannot uh have something be a supportive measure and also be a sanction. So that is a a an important distinction within the policy. In terms of emergency removals, um we have always been able to make emergency removals. We are going to revise our process a bit in terms, it is the Title IX Coordinator who makes a decision decision on an emergency removal. Obviously, that's not something that anyone would do in isolation, and we are going to have a specific process working with a targeted student intervention and support team using the standard objective um threat assessment protocol to help us determine when an emergency removal might be required. Um in terms of Section Ten, under promptness, I do need to point out one discrepancy. I believe that the policy that you all have indicates sixty to ninety days, I believe is what it says in this section. It should read forty-five to sixty business days, and I did not catch that until this afternoon when I was writing notes. And so um that will be corrected by the next time that you all see this um policy. But so I did want to to point out that discrepancy. It should read forty-five to sixty business days uh are what we will be utilizing to resolve cases most of the time. Uh in terms of uh Section Eleven, privacy does change a bit. While we will make every effort to uh preserve the part privacy of complainants, we are now required to let the respondent know who is filing the complaint if we know. Um there is still the option to to make anonymous reports, um but we are required to share with the respondent who is making the allegation. And so that will will change privacy a bit. No, no real changes around jurisdiction of the uh recipient or time limits on reporting. Although our current, the current policy does request that uh reports be made within, I believe it's fifteen days. Uh this current policy says there is no time limitation. Obviously, if somebody waits a year or two to report, it it will make the investigative process much more difficult, but there is currently no time limit. Online harassment and misconduct. The the policy is written and interpreted broadly to include online and uh cyber manifestations of any behaviors that are prohibited within the policy. I think this is particularly important as we start in a one-hundred-percent virtual model um because it is possible for for Title IX violations to occur within a virtual setting. So this particular portion of the policy will be important, always important, but particularly so in a virtual setting. Let's see, moving on to Section Fifteen, we have for several years combined our policy on non-discrimination and our sexual harassment policy on the employee side. We have not combined them on the student's side. In fact, there was not really a a policy specific to civil rights violations on the student's side. And so they will be combined um in this policy. Um and um in Section Sixteen, the we are specifically outlining um our policy on disability, uh discrimination and accommodation. These, this particular section is based on the Americans with Disabilities Act and Section Five-O-Four of the Rehabilitation Act. And and we have always followed those two particular pieces of legislation, but we have never very distinctly outlined those two particular pieces of legislation in our discriminatory harassment policy. We felt that was important to include this language and broaden the definitions that we um include in this policy. Um the Director of Special Education and/or Designee has been identified as the Five-O-Four Coordinator for the School Division, and the Executive Director of Human Resources has been identified as the ADA Coordinator. This is how we've been doing it for years, so it's not a change. We will just be more specifically advertising that information moving forward. Under Section Seventeen, which is uh we talk about discriminatory harassment. Uh it is in this particular situation or section, and this section is many pages long, five, six, I think. We include these specific definitions to sexual harassment uh versus discrimination. Again, as I referenced in the presentation, these are very legalistic definitions. Some of them honestly are a little bit graphic for a K-12 setting, particularly, you know, your pre-K-five um setting. But these are the definitions that are utilized and required by the regulations. Again, good bit of conversation as to whether or not we should include them. And in order to make sure that everybody has equal access, um we have included them here. Section Eighteen, in terms of retaliation, this particular section, it is, it is lengthier than our um sec or actually probably a little bit lengthier than our current section on retaliation. But we have always taken very seriously um the fact that making a civil rights-based claim is a protected activity. Participating in any sort of investigations is a protected activity. So um felt it was important to expand on on retaliation. And and the fact that if anyone does feel that they've been retaliated against based on participating in something that falls under Title IX um or any of the other civil rights mandates, um that it is strictly prohibited and um we will take action. Section Nineteen specifically looks at mandated reporting. Again, this is a new requirement under Title IX. And it is important, and this is a point we'll be driving home with all of our employees, failure to report i- if what, it doesn't matter whether I'm a food service worker or a secretary or um an assistant principal or a teacher, if I fail to report a suspected violation, particularly as it relates to Title IX, and it it will result in disciplinary action for that employee and could also result in the School Division being deliberately indifferent when it comes to addressing a Title IX issue. And if we are seen as deliberately indifferent as a School Division, it will be expensive for for us because um it will be, it will be grounds for whomever is making the allegation to to sue. Um so we will be driving that particular piece home with employees. Section Twenty takes a look at, you know, what happens if a complainant does not wish to proceed. And and that may be the case once, um you know, there are some some components of this legislation um that we anticipate will have a chilling effect on people actually reporting and or carrying through with the investigation of an that the complainant decides, you know what, I I I don't want you to address this issue. I'm good. There will be times when it is appropriate to perhaps look at an informal resolution or to follow the complainant's issue or complainant's wishes and not uh formally investigate, make sure that there are supportive, some supportive measures in place. But there will also be times when, as the Title IX Coordinator, I will be obligated to conduct an investigation, whether the complainant wants to move forward or not. One of those would be if the allegation involves any sort of adult-on-student activity. Once we are aware of that, we will, we absolutely have an obligation to carry through with an investigation. Um there, there may also be times when a complainant not, may not be aware that that there's some sort of pattern, but as a Title IX Coordinator, I'm aware that there's a a pattern with Student A. Um and so if if I see some sort of pattern, um then I would be required to move forward and and file the formal complaint. Uh Section Twenty-One, False Allegations and Evidence. And then um the final section is consideration, number twenty-three, consideration for hesitant complainants and witnesses. This is not a new practice for Hampton City Schools, but it is new to policy language in terms of, you know, there may be times that I may be a reluctant complainant or a reluctant witness because I I might have been doing something I shouldn't have been doing as well. I might have been skipping class when this particular, you know, whatever the allegation is. So um we do put in writing that you know, we may look at disciplinary immunity for some students in order to get to the the heart of a more critical incident. Obviously, if it's a significant policy violation, we won't be looking at immunity, but we may in certain situations look at disciplinary immunity. And that, in a nutshell, is the revised policy for both GBAB and JHGB.
Uh thank you, Ms. Ruth. Um I guess that also covers the GBAB dash R for deletion.
It it does to a certain extent. One of the things that we are going to be asking is that GBAB dash R, which is are the current uh procedures that we follow in terms of an investigation, we are going to ask that those be deleted. We are going to be replacing them with two processes that are not board-approved processes. Um the reason that that we are doing that is the because the Title IX regulations are so new and because there are already several lawsuits out there that challenge the regulations themselves, um we anticipate that we may have to revise our in uh resolution processes in a very quick manner, um which we would not be able to do if they were to remain as a policy or a regulation. Um you know, that would take at least six weeks to to move through the the revision process. And so at least while they are so fluid, we are asking uh that the regulations be deleted, and we will have both the formal and the informal process available online. And whatever is the the current or whatever has the most recent date, um for instance, the first when the policies go up on the fourteenth, it will have an effective date of August fourteenth. We will will indicate whenever those um processes are updated.
Oh, thank you. I wanted to say real quick, um specifically, our our two new boards, newest board members, Ms. Banks Gray and Ms. uh Afonja, we didn't do uh any policies at our last meeting, so uh I know you're probably familiar, but I'm going to say it anyway, because I'll I want to say it, which is we take all of our policies and put them through a three-step process, first read, deliberation, and then action. And at first read, it is the administration's opportunity present to us and our opportunity to ask questions of clarification. So we're really not going, we're not, the intent is not to deliberate the policies tonight or make changes, is to ask The intent is not to deliberate the policies tonight or make changes, it's to ask and have the opportunity to ask for questions of clarification. So wanted to say that before we, we open up the floor to ask Ms. Ruth any questions.
Thank you for that clarification.
Sure. Do we have any questions? For Ms. Ruth on the new Title IX regs? All right, well then we will move on to sick leave.
All right, a, a much shorter, simpler policy. The, the most significant change, we have just made some, some slight grammar changes on page three. The most significant change to this policy is on page four. And that is that effective June first, twenty twenty, and we selected that date. This policy should have come to you all for approval in the, the April-ish timeframe, so that it would be in place in time for retirements. In June, that didn't happen, and so. We have made the effective date for June first, twenty twenty, so that if we do have any retirees who are affected by this policy change. That it will, any, let me be more specific, anyone who retired in June of twenty twenty. That the policy will be applicable to them. And the change is currently, you, the policy states that you have to. Be on Hampton City Schools insurance for five years in order to be eligible to continue the insurance after you retire. Well, that, that doesn't work for any, anyone who may retire. With less than five years of experience with this. Doesn't happen very often, but, but once in a blue moon it does, and so what we are recommending is that. If an employee has less than five years of service time with Hampton City Schools, that they may participate in the insurance subsidy. For the length of time they have been employed with the school division. So if I retire from Hampton City Schools and I only have three years of service, and I have been. On the Hampton City Schools insurance for the entire three years, then I am eligible for. The subsidy for three years. Wouldn't be eligible for it for five, which. And actually, some folks are eligible for, for longer than that, depending on the age when they retire. But they will be eligible for the subsidy for how. An equivalent time period for however many years they were full-time employees with us. And so that is the most significant change. And then on page five. We have made a change to the transfer of sick leave. When somebody goes to another public school division and. We will make that transfer so long as, and this is if they're going to another school division. So long as the transfer is made within, or the request is made within ninety days. And actually, I think I misspoke. So that's when somebody transfers into Hampton City Schools. We are removing the. Requirements that if they go to another school division, that the request has to be made in ninety days. And that's in part because with our new human resource information system. We're now able to track that and make that an automatic process. In the past, when we had that ninety-day limitation, it's because we had system limitations. We can now set dates within munis that will allow. An automatic removal of the leave, so that's the, the reason behind that change.
Any questions from board members for clarification? Yes, Mr. Samuels.
Thank you, Chairman Kilgore. I'm, I'm not going to ask this question to you, but I would just want to let you know, Ms. Robin Ruth, that you will be receiving an email from me tomorrow in regards to. A, a question that I had asked approximately two years ago in regards to that, that, something that is similar to what you're. Talking about as it relates to possibly, if someone leaves the division, and I'll just ask. If someone leaves the school division and they have X amount of sick leave. That they've earned. Is it possible also that they could be compensated for that sick leave?
We, we reviewed that at the time that you, and I do remember. That question a couple of years ago. It was cost prohibitive at that point in time. I have not reviewed it. Recently, but it was cost prohibitive at, at the time the question was asked.
Okay. All right.
All right, thank you, Mr. Samuels. All right, now we'll move on to food services. Is that going to be Ms. Dorch? Or is that going to be Ms. Forrest?
Yes. Good evening, Chairman Kilgore, Vice Chair Woodhouse, School Board Members, Dr. Smith, and the Hampton community. Tonight, my first read policy is school board policy EFB, free and reduced-price food services. The first change to this policy is actually the title. I am recommending the change to title to just say food services. And that is because this policy, as we go through the changes, includes additional information beyond just free and reduced-price meals. And that title is also the same title that is used by VSPA. On page one, I've added code references as it relates to competitive foods in line with the Virginia Administrative Code and the State Code of Virginia. I've also added subsection headings to separate the contents within this policy on pages one and two. On page one, you'll see a new paragraph that appears to be in addition. But this paragraph, which states that students who participate in free or reduced-cost meals and milk programs are not overly. Identified, distinguished, or physically segregated. This paragraph has always been in the policy. It was just on page two. So I'm just moving the location of this paragraph within this actual policy. No changes to the actual language. On page two, I removed the statement, who is eligible for, for, for reduced-price meals. And the portion of, in the section under unpaid meals. That is because the unpaid meal policy is related to students who receive reduced-price meals and full-price meals. So I took out that distinction because this is a policy over all of food services. Also on page two, added, and this is based on Virginia State Code changes, but also it has been Hampton's practice as well. That employees do not require meals that are served to students to be thrown away after they've been served. If that student has meal debt or cannot pay for that meal at that point in time. Additionally, on page two, added based on Virginia Code changes and HCS practice that donations may be solicited. And received for the purpose of offsetting meal debt at any time. Page two also includes new information as it relates to competitive foods, and this again is another change. Related to the VSPA update in line with the Virginia Administrative Code, and this also has been HCS practice as well. Continuing with the changes on page two. Added the maximum number of fundraisers that can be held in which non-competitive foods. Can be served, and that max of thirty, that is actually the max per the Virginia Administrative Code, so we've included that max here. And then page two and three includes all the required information related to the record-keeper requirements for competitive foods and fundraisers. And the last change is on page three, where we've added a cross-reference, the school board policy KH Public Gifts to Schools. And that is due to the addition of the section where we explicitly state that we can solicit donations and for the purpose of offsetting meal debt. And that concludes all of the updates to policy EFB.
Thank you, Ms. Dorch. Do any board members have any questions for clarification? All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That concludes the first reads, and we now come to the information section of our meeting. So I'll, I'll give the superintendent the first cut information. Dr. Smith, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So let me just say, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, thank you for your action this evening as it relates to the return-to-school plan. As we keep in the forefront the safety and well-being of students and staff. As you know, we will continue to keep before us our mission of academic excellence for every child, every day, whatever it takes. And meeting that of our core business, the needs of young people through our teaching and learning as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. And before I get to board members, I'm going to give Ms. Reeves a chance if she would like to say something. Ms. Reeves, did you want to say anything this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Kilgore. This week and tomorrow is the last day for the Legal Assistant in our office, Eileen Larson. And I think you all. Perhaps not so much the two new members, but everyone has. Has been blessed. She's served my office with fidelity and always been gracious and cheerful and collaborative. And you looked at even this new policy. She's. She's been, been the guiding person for four hundred school board policies for those last many, many years. And kept, kept all of us straight, so I just want to say farewell and, and happy retirement, Eileen. And, and I hope you all will, will, will think the same for your school board legal assistant. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Ms. Reeves. Okay, do we have any information from board members? All right. Well, okay, wanted to. Let everyone know our next scheduled meeting is a work session scheduled for six-thirty, August nineteenth. Location is, is TBD. We would typically have it at One Franklin Street, but. We, we may have to consider that, just like we did this meeting. This one was supposed to be at Jones at the Forum, but. We all collaborated and decided that, that it was best and safe to do it virtually again, so we will see what happens on the nineteenth. And then following the nineteenth, the board will have its annual retreat, August twenty-sixth, from nine AM to four PM. And that is currently scheduled to also be at One Franklin Street in the Rupert Sargent Building in the first floor. The other thing I'd like to say is that I would like to just say thank you to Dr. Owens and Dr. Haynes and Ms. Hatcher. And Mr. Foley, I haven't recognized you guys yet, but thanks for sticking with us this evening. And appreciate you all being there, so we can at least see your face. Anyway, any other comments from anyone before we wrap up? All right. Thanks, everyone, for participating tonight and for watching. If you watch from home, and stay safe. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.